If I can get everyone to take their seats. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Lompoke City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, May 16th, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. Let's see, we are reconvening from a closed session we began at 5:30. And, City Attorney, do we have any reports?
Thank you, Mayor. There were two items on the agenda. Both were discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. If you'll please rise and join Pastor Darren Hunt in the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear God, tonight, we gather once again for the business of running this great city. At the outset of this meeting, we give you thanks for the privilege of an open and free democracy. We give you thanks for the opportunity to gather for the betterment of this community, and we give you thanks for the citizens and leaders gathered tonight. Thank you for our elected officials. Indue them with wisdom and a sense of understanding that the positions you have chosen them for affect the lives and livelihoods of all those who live, work, and play in this community. Help them not take lightly their responsibilities and duties, nor work to achieve personal agendas or side projects outside the realm of what is best for this entire community. God, help them to be diligent, wise, and courageous as they lead. God, we need your help, your favor, and your blessing in our community. Especially as we face a very tough budget time and all that goes with it. God, help us. Tonight, we also thank you and pray for all who work and serve others in our community. We especially thank and pray for our fire and police departments. We thank you for the years that Chief Ladipow has served our fire department and pray God's best for him in this next season of his life. And we pray for this department as they enter this interim period and that you would lead our city in selecting the right candidate for our new fire chief. Bless these new promotions and all in our fire department. Keep them safe, Lord. We pray also for our police department. Remember them during this National Police Week, these men and women who are willing, like our fire personnel, to put their safety on the line for our safety. God bless them. Now, God, in due with all power, wisdom, love, patience, courage, and strength, this council and these proceedings, in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. Okay, there were, let's see, there were no presentations elsewhere, but I'd like to call up Chief Ladipow. For, you've got some, you've got some news for us.
Yeah, there's a lot of good memories in my career. Hiring folks, introducing them to the fine profession and the calling that we know is the fire service, promoting, watching families grow. This evening, I'd like to introduce our two newest promotion. I'll start with Kevin Shea. We've recently promoted Kevin from engineer, the guy that drives the fire engine, to captain, the guy that tells the crew what to do. And Kevin's been with us since 2008. He and his family live in the area. There was a very nice article about Kevin in the Santa Clara Valley News, which is where Kevin's from. He and his family obviously moved up here. And we recently swore him in as our newest captain. This is actually the second time I've had the privilege of promoting Kevin since I've been here. So it's a very special time for me. And also, now I'd like to introduce you to battalion, newly promoted Battalion Chief Brian Fetterman. Brian has been, Brian and his family, and his father and mother and sister have been here since Brian was six. They relocated from Silmar. Brian is a product of our local schools. Graduated from Cabrillo, went to Allen Hancock while he was in the Fire Academy, got his degree, took his medical training, played sports, just an all-around All-American. Brian and his young family also live in the area. You know, this is a very special time for these two young men, but it's also a special time for the department. For the last five years, we have been investing in what we call the succession process. Not only has the department invested in the process, but the members of the department, and in particular, right now, this evening, we're recognizing Kevin and Brian. The succession process is extremely important to the health, to the vitality of the organization, because it proves that with enough time, with enough dedication, we're able to groom folks to promote from within. If, if we don't invest, if we don't take the time to make sure that we can recruit folks here to participate in that succession plan, then we stand the risk of not having folks to promote and having to go from the outside. We pride ourselves in recruiting, hiring, and promoting people who love the community, who are dedicated to the citizens of this community, and who want to spend a majority of their career here. So I want to commend these two for committing to the organization and showing the lead for many others in our organization. They are the future of the department, and I look forward.
Okay.
I guess you don't want to say anything?
Okay. And Chief, why don't you stay up there? Well, as many of you probably have heard, actually Pastor Hunt mentioned it this evening, we're going to be losing a very good man to the city. Chief Ladipow will be retiring soon, the end of June, and we want to present him with a certificate. Because he seems so hollow to just give you a certificate. I wish I could give you a check for a million dollars, but we've got the budget-
Well, I'd give it right back to you.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so, all I can say is, Chief, it's been a real, I mean, more than just an honor, serving with you. I think you're the third chief that I've associated with in the city. I'm not going to say you're the best, because I like the other two guys as well. But you certainly went above and beyond our expectations. You've brought so much to our city, so much to our department, and I would like to present you with the certificate. It's from the city. It's presented to Kurt Ladipow, Fire Chief, June 25th, 2012 through June 30th, 2017, in appreciation of your dedication and commitment to the city of Lompoke and its citizens.
So, just a few words. I really don't have anything prepared. When I, when Gail and I, my wife is here, made the decision to come here, we didn't realize what a great little community we were joining. I knew we had a great fire department, but I didn't realize how great until I'd been here for about a week. Everything we've accomplished, and somebody asked me the other day, "So what have you accomplished?" I haven't accomplished anything. The organization as a team has grown. We've advanced, and absent their dedication, I wouldn't have succeeded. Any chief worth their salt will tell you, they cannot accomplish a thing without an excellent team. And we have an excellent team. You heard me talk a little bit about the succession plan. There's some things I, I'm a little distressed over. You heard me say that I enjoy bringing people on and starting their careers in the fire service. I have hired 29 people in five years. Our authorized strength is 29. I hope that over the next few years, we're able to stabilize some of the turnover, because the team deserves it and the community deserves it. But I have had the privilege of serving this community. I've got lots of friends, lots of great memories, and thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to take a little recess. We're going to have some cake, and we're going to eat it, too. So we'll be back in 10 or 15 minutes. 15, yeah.
...
in 2016 over 2013. And my sewer bill increased $559 in 2016 over 2013. This is an increase of $1,159 yearly, and now an additional $299. In the same period, 2013 to 2016, my water usage was reduced, not by much, but 8.5% from 306 units to 280 units. I'm really tired of your irresponsibility of imposing the successive burden on the ratepayers of Lompoc. No water or wastewater increases should be in the 2018. Worse yet, I understand that several city employees have received increases from $30,000 to $50,000 a year. This is total fiscal irresponsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Your cane.
I'm Tim Smith, Chair of the Utility Commission. And last night, on May 15th, a special meeting of the Utility Commission considered items six and items 12 on tonight's agenda for the purpose of advising council. Four of the five commissioners were present, and I want to report briefly on the outcome of that meeting. Regarding item six, on a unanimous vote in favor, the commission recommends the council affirm the staff recommendations to increase the water and solid waste rates. On a vote of two in favor and two opposed, the commission has no recommendation to council with respect to the water rates. Also, although not a part of the staff rate request, on a vote of three in favor and one opposed, the commission recommends the council consider reducing the electric rates by 10% for the next two years. Regarding item 12, on a unanimous vote, the commission recommends accepting the staff proposals for the utility budgets with the following exceptions. For the Water Division, on page 139 of the budget, not to approve well number 10 for the estimated $1.7 million, but to fund a test well for $150,000. Also, for the Water Division, to include the basin engineering study, but drop the $1 million in basin upgrades from the current budget. For the Wastewater Division, on page 141 of the budget document, to direct staff to reduce other less critical capital items so that sewer lines that are in the most critical condition can be replaced. And for the Solid Waste Division, the stormwater project for the landfill will almost certainly need to be a financed capital item and should be shown as such in the documents. It's, uh, looks like it's a big lump sum all at once, so that should be spelled out. Also, for the Solid Waste Division, there is a line item on page 173, Solid Waste Collection, that shows an increase that council should review. We couldn't figure it out, but it's a substantial increase. We hope you'll take these recommendations to heart, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent calendar? So you know and rise are gonna close public comment on the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of things that are generally considered routine unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member choose to pull an item? Councilor Starbuck?
I'd like to pull item six.
Okay. Pull item six. Anyone else? Councilor Mosby?
I just had a quick question about item number three.
Okay.
Maybe it could be answered without a detail. Is the adoption of the firefighter wage increase in this draft document? The draft budget document, are those numbers incorporated in here?
Yes, they are.
Are we bound by the numbers if we go ahead with this? That portion of the budget book, would they be bound? Would it be finalizing that portion of the draft document?
No, not necessarily, because there's still, that would be finalizing, if you will, the rate at which we apply the resources. If ultimately, for instance, you were to say, as a majority of the council, that you wanted to either reduce or expand services, then the numbers would change based upon that change in scope of mission and work to be done. So this does lock in the rate at which we do the work, but not necessarily the wholeness of the work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Starbuck?
Real quick, Mr. Wyomar, that also holds true with item four here, with restating the master pay schedule for city employees also, same, same?
That is correct.
If I may, there's no monetary issue with item number four. It's just restating and collecting and publishing in one document the schedule of positions.
Councilor Mosby?
Make a motion to approve consigl. With pulling off item number six, right?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Let's vote. That passes 5-0, okay. Item number six will be heard just prior to the second oral communication. Okay. Moving on to staff presentations and announcements. None? Okay. Oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on any item that is before, can come before this council. And please line up over here by the podium, please. Okay, no one has any comments, okay. So we're gonna close our communication and move it to item number seven, which is appointments. Oh, did, okay, did someone have oral communication?
Wanna talk about the nonprofit section?
You can at this point unless you want to hold it for the time we're discussing the budget, okay? Okay, moving on to item number seven. We have two positions, at-large positions, for the Economic Development Committee. We have one applicant that is seeking approval to join the Economic Development Committee. That is former council member Dwayne Humdall. Councilor Mosby?
I'd motion to make the appointment.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second? Victor?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve council member Humdall. Let's vote. Congratulations, Mr. Humdall, and welcome back to the dais. Okay. I'm number eight, public hearing. Okay, public hearing, consider 2017 draft annual action plan to approve the Community Development Block Grant, CDGB, and Human Services Program fiscal year 2017. And this is by Community Development Program Manager Kristi Alkon.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, city staff, and public. I am Kristi Alkon, Community Development Program Manager for the City of Lompoc. Tonight, staff recommends the city council hold a public hearing, approve the capital improvement projects under the CDBG program for fiscal year 1718, adopt resolution 611917, approving the fiscal year 1718 budgets for CDBG and Human Services Program funds for inclusion in the draft 1718 Annual Action Plan. Authorize the city manager or his designee to sign any agreements or certifications that authorize the city to receive these funds, and authorize submission of the approved 1718 Lompoc Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or provide alternate direction. HUD has notified CDBG entitlement communities that there is a delay in issuing our entitlement amounts, and to proceed with the public hearing process utilizing estimated amounts. So the amounts presented before you are estimates. The 1718 CDBG allocation estimated amount is a total of $420,000, and is broken down into the following allocation amounts. Program administration at $84,000, which is the maximum, the regulatory maximum of 20% of the total grant fund. Human services at $63,000, which is also the maximum allowed, and is 15% of the total grant amount. The remainder of funds, $273,000, are allowed to be used for capital projects. In addition to the 1718 CDBG grant, the city projects the following additional funding. CDBG program income is estimated at $264,736. Reprogram CDBG capital funds of $244,530. Estimated human services donations through the utility billing campaign at $15,000, and $25,000, which was a city general fund contribution approved by city council December 20th. The primary objective of the CDBG program is the development of viable communities. This is achieved by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, all principally for persons of low and moderate income. Additional funding criteria are that CDBG funds may not replace any city or state-funded functions. Human service donations paid by utility customers are restricted to human services activities and cannot be used for administrative costs. All funds must be used for activities that benefit low-income persons, and expenditures that are not in compliance with HUD regulations must be paid back from the city's general fund. Exhibit A of the resolution lists all various activities and funding sources. General administration of the CDBG grant, up to the 20% maximum, or $84,000 there, is allowed. Staff is recommending council allocate $78,025 for general administration. The remaining allocation of $5,775, staff recommends be allocated to fund a fair housing, education, and compliance contract with Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County under contract services. Capital project funding consists of $273,000 under the 1718 entitlement amount, and $244,530 from the general fund repayment of the theater project. The total amount for capital project funds is $517,530. The projects recommended for funding were identified during the preparation of the 1719 budget process. The Public Facilities Project, let me go back. The Public Facilities Project identified here, ADA restroom phase two, with the total recommendation of $482,530, consists of $238,000 from the 1718 CDBG funds, and then the general fund repayment for the disallowed theater project, which is $244,530. The project consists of demolition of existing restroom facilities and replacement with ADA-compliant restroom facilities, and that includes pathways, ADA-compliant pathways, to those facilities. Phase one feasibility study and conceptual design of this project was funded with 1617 CDBG funds, and included the facilities listed here. Those are Barton, Beatty, Centennial College, JM, Ken Adams, Pioneer River, Thompson Parks, Anderson Rec Center, Civic Auditorium Theater, and Lompoc Public Library. The next item you'll see under the Lompoc Residential Emergency Repair Program, which is also considered a capital project, is a program that capital charities provides, the Mobile Home Emergency Repair Grant for seniors and other low-income households. Funding is recommended at $35,000 for the emergency repair grant program. The CDBG loan programs, all listed here, are the Housing Rehabilitation Revolving Loan Fund, and is recommended for funding at $76,715. That $76,715 would be coming from estimated program income that we've collected in 1617. That program income is derived from those loan funds. So when people repay those loans, it goes back into the loan fund to provide more loans. The Economic Development Loan Program is recommended for funding at $50,000, and is being funded, again, from that same pot of program income. The Facade Improvement Loan Grant Fund Program, you may not have heard of yet. I'll be back to talk to you about it at a later date and present the whole program. But for now, we do have to recognize where we intend to spend our funds in our action plan. So we're proposing $50,000 for that program as well, from that program income. So CDBG, we all have trouble saying it. CDBG program income of $85,021 is recommended to fund delivery costs associated with the processing, servicing, and overall management of the CDBG-funded loans. The current loan portfolio consists of 33 loans totaling over $1.7 million. Next, the Human Services Program funding is estimated at a total of $106,000. The city received 19 eligible applications for funding requests totaling $243,836. The Human Services Commission met on February 6th and formulated the recommendations that are highlighted here for all of those agencies. The city may use up to 15% of its CDBG grant for human services activity. This is not a minimum federal requirement, but a maximum allowable usage of CDBG funds. Such funding could be used for other eligible activities and are allocated at the maximum for our Human Services Program. So 15% of the 1718 grant is $63,000. We have $3,000 from program income, and $40,000 from the Human Services Fund. That $40,000 is comprised of $25,000 from the general fund contribution, and $15,000 in estimated donations from utility customers through the utility billing fundraising campaign. Due to high demand for nonprofit funding as requested from the Human Services Commission and recognized by the city council, the city council dedicated a general fund contribution of $50,000 for the upcoming 1719 budget cycle. Please note that to balance the overall city budget, the draft 1719 budget does not include this allocation. The 1718 Annual Action Plan was posted for public review at the city library and at city hall and on our city website on April 10th for the 30-day public review period. Copies of resolution 611917, signed HUD certification, minutes from this meeting and any public comment received during the period, the public review period, will be forwarded to HUD with the 1718 Lompoc Annual Action Plan. with the seventeen-eighteen Lompoc Annual Action Plan. In light of the overall city budget proposal, staff recommends City Council consider whether it would like to continue to allocate the twenty-five thousand from the general fund for human service program funding in fiscal year seventeen-eighteen and again in eighteen-nineteen. If council decides not to continue this funding, staff will need to reconvene the Human Services Commission to reprioritize funding and bring a new recommendation and this staff report back to council at a future date, but prior to the HUD-required submission deadline. Council may also opt to provide funding for fiscal year seventeen-eighteen and not in eighteen-nineteen, in which case council may adopt items two through five in the staff recommendations. And I can go back, so you guys have that up there, of what the recommendations were. Council will also need to consider and provide direction on which funding streams to increase or which expenses to cut if it provides this funding to the Human Services Program. Thank you all. I know it's a tough decision, and I'm available to address any questions or concerns you may have.
Any questions for Councilman Starbuck?
Thank you, Kristi. You know, we've had the Facade Improvement Program for years.
It was a little bit different type of program than what I'm going to be presenting to you.
But in the years that we had it in the past, it was never used.
That's why we're revamping it.
Could we take that fifty thousand and apply that to the Human Services Commission for funding? Or does this fund have to be segregated?
I would have to reiterate to you in the beginning. I mentioned that fifteen percent maximum of that CDBG grant can be used. We are using the fifteen percent maximum.
For human services?
Correct. I can't take any money from any of those other areas and bump up that sixty-three thousand. It would be a violation of the HUD regulations.
So currently, the Human Services Program here, it shows then that we have sixty-three thousand allotted for it.
Yes. That's how much they have. Plus, twenty-five thousand from general fund, three thousand from program income, and fifteen thousand from their estimated utility billing, which is a total of...
A hundred-and-six thousand.
Yes. I can't get that twenty-five thousand from anywhere else in CDBG grant world.
Councilman Mosby.
In your, on your exhibit Bs, you have salaries in here in two different places. One on page one of three, you have fifty thousand in there. And then on page two of three, salaries is in here for forty-nine. Are these the same or different?
No. So Fund Forty-three at the top of the page, that is program income. Those salaries and benefits come out of our repaid loans, the program income from all of these loans, when the money, the interest we're charging on them. Those are self-sustaining programs. So all that interest that's coming back in, it funds the staffing cost associated with creating those loans, servicing those loans, and managing those loans. They're not coming out of the grant or general fund or anywhere else.
That's the monitoring money, so to say.
Only for CDBG...
Loans?
Yes.
Okay. And the other, the other one is?
The other one is Fund Forty-four, and that is the twenty percent maximum. You're seeing there that eighty-four thousand.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristi, if tonight, if tonight, the council chose to not allow the twenty-five thousand dollar city contribution, after we finalize a budget, we find out that there may be some money available, can we put it back in at that point?
It would, it would be too late for me to include it in the annual action plan. So as of now, I only really include in the annual action plan activities funded with CDBG dollars. Your general fund money is not CDBG dollars. So I don't include those in there. I always add it in because it bolsters our action plan and it, it shows HUD that we are also contributing at the local level to these activities and we deem them very important and needed in our community. And that is why we give more money to them. If you chose to fund them down the road, the Human Services Commission could reconvene and decide to fund, take that twenty-five thousand dollars and fund applicants that maybe were unfunded after removing the funding. So I guess a clean way to explain that. You say no tonight. We go back to the drawing board, special meeting, because we are under a time crunch. We get new allocations recommended by the commission. We bring them back to you without that twenty-five thousand in there. And you can see, it's gonna, it's gonna greatly affect. There's twelve agencies funded under the Human Services column right now. That's over six hundred beneficiaries that would not receive those services. So that's just a kind of snapshot of what could happen. So if that happens and that money goes away, we only show the funding for the CDBG capital. If then, through the budgetary process, you say, you know what, we have the twenty-five thousand. Let's give it to them. Then the Human Services Commission would have to do another special meeting and deliberate on, now we have twenty-five thousand. Who do we want to give it to?
Thank you.
I would, I would say that would create a little bit more administrative oversight because now, as you can see, I think we have eighteen funding contracts, because we have some pretty little grants here. We'd have eighteen funding contracts and potentially, we would have eighteen more. Because if they decided to cut everybody down at a certain percentage to make up that twenty-five thousand, then they'd have another set of contracts. So administratively, it would be increasing costs.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, I have a question for you. If, for some reason, we choose to put the fifty thousand dollars back into the CDB, into the budget here, where does the fifty thousand dollars come out of the? Because then it'll be an imbalanced budget. What happens then?
Well, right now, where the, what was presented to you was a, as you're aware, a balanced budget that actually had a slight surplus in it. It was in the range of forty, I think, three thousand dollars, Brad? Something along that line. Anyway, in between forty and fifty thousand dollars. And where we go from there as we work our way through the entire budget process, whether on this topic or other topics, I, I sense there's going to be a bit of movement in whatever that final number is. As you might want to restore programs that were defunded, we would reduce the amount that's left there. And likewise, if we were to make other reductions, could increase that. What I'd be looking for is direction from council at a program level, what services you'd want to expand or what services you'd want to reduce. And then we'd find the line items to match, to match the, you know, where the dollars are in the line items to match that up. I don't know if that helps answer the question. So in other words, in this case, if you're able, if you decide you want to restore that, it's going to take us, and it was fifty thousand dollars we were moving. We'd go from, do you know the number? From, from a positive forty-six thousand to minus four thousand, and we'd have to find four thousand dollars' worth of cuts to, to balance the budget. That part probably wouldn't be as incredible as if we were dealing with four hundred thousand or something. So it's, there's going to be a, a running total as we go along. It's, I think, most productive is if at each step of the way, though, we, we identify where the money's coming from, either through other income sources or from, from a reduction in other costs and identifying it, like I say, at the service level. If there are cost reductions, what, what services we'd want to cut. In this case, for the first one, because we've got almost all of it covered, we probably wouldn't need to do that. We would just say, well, the current surplus is what will move over in that regard.
Okay. But Kristi, what you're asking us this evening is to approve this with or without or a portion of?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Councilman Starbuck?
I, I don't have a question, but I'd like to just make a comment here. If we paid the Human Services Commission by the hour, it would probably cost us fifty-one thousand dollars. I mean, these people that sit on the Human Services Commission devote a lot of time, energy, homework, research. And I, I've, over the last six years that I've sat on this council, I've always agreed with their recommendation of dispersment, and it's always gone to something that was providing a benefit to the community. So this would be one item that I would certainly hate to see go away. I mean, if we could, we're obviously going to do budget reviews. We're going to do after the budget's approved. I mean, I'd like to go ahead and kind of be able to move forward with this just so that we can continue with what we promised them for this budget cycle.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. We're going to move into public comment. You want to say anything, address this? If I could remind everyone to turn off, silence your cellphones?
I'm Barbara Holt, part of the Human Service Commission. And when I saw this on the agenda...
Ms. Holt, speak, yeah, bring it closer to you.
You don't want to hear what I want to say. No, I'm Barbara Holt, part of the Human Service Commission. And when this was on the agenda tonight, I had no idea coming here that they were going to take away the twenty-five thousand that you gave us in December, which we came forward because the funding was so low. I think you get more bang for your dollar out of everything with the human services than you probably do most anyplace else out of the whole thing that you're funding for. And as Mr. Councilman Starbuck said, you couldn't pay the price of these people on a wage for what they do. I think I sat and figured out quickly when I came tonight. They probably spend, during the allocation process alone, over sixty hours, just interviewing the people making these decisions. And I think it would behoove the city of Lompoc to support some of our nonprofits, which I don't think you do in any other manner other than this. So what I mean, if you have any questions about the allocations or anything that we do, I'd be more than glad to try and answer them. Most of the council people up here know that I've been on that commission for a number of years, and I have some knowledge of what goes on. And I think you're making a big mistake if you take away the twenty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Reinhardt, and I'm the Executive Director of the Alliance for Feminist Global Access. We're known as APA. APA provides access to life-saving medications and patient advocacy services to the most vulnerable members in our community here in Lompoc, including the uninsured, underinsured, such as seniors on Medicare Part D who reach their annual medication coverage limits, and also insured individuals who are in need of costly specialty medication in order to treat very serious and debilitating chronic health conditions. In twenty-sixteen, APA helped fill over a hundred-and-fifty prescriptions serving Lompoc residents, oh, saving Lompoc residents over a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars in monetary value of prescription medications. Just here in Lompoc alone, with one part-time person who is co-located at, at the lobby of the Lompoc Medical Center, we have a staff there two afternoons a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays from three to seven. And I ask on behalf of APA and the people that we serve here in Lompoc that you truly take the time to see the value that some of us who work in the nonprofit sector provide to our community and to also look at how much money we do save the city in other ways. I mean, the a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars in monetary value that was saved is now in the, in the pockets of residents here in Lompoc who are able to use that for other vital services, such as, you know, food, shelter. At APA, we, we don't want people to have to choose between, you know, filling their prescriptions or feeding their families. And I hope that with everything going on in healthcare, in the, you know, in the world, in the world of healthcare, I really hope that we can continue having the support of the city because truly, here in Lompoc, we are funded mostly by CDBG funds. We're all, we're only funded by our local foundations and our local cities. We're very, very small, and we really need the support. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you make the right decision.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Karen Powers. I'm the Finance Human Resource Director for North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. And I want to thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your past support of our services. CDBG funding, as Kristi said, is all for low-income people. So what that does at our agency, it provides counseling for survivors of sexual assault, child abuse, and adults molested as children with counseling. People that otherwise couldn't afford counseling. That's why, one of the reasons they come to us. Also, we're doing a collaborative effort with the Boys and Girls Club this coming year with this funding, if we get it, that we thought was secure, to work with kids, youth, low income to prevent sexual assault, child abuse, teach them how to stay safe, if possible. So I'd like to say, if you made up your mind in December to give twenty-five thousand dollars, why now is it coming up that you're not going to? So you made a good decision, and I hope you stick with it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Len, Lompoc resident. First, I apologize. I left the office without enough copies to share, so five of you will have to share three copies. Some of you I've already had this conversation with. I think we all agree that CDBG for, for the community programs is one of the most vital things that we get done. You got to share Stacy, and they'll give it back to you. She won't share. She's stingy. And I would, I would say that you made a commitment back when, so please stand by it. It's a very small amount of money that does a great deal of good. But I'm really here to talk to you about a greater subject. At the last meeting, the city manager said, well, we're not going to fund nonprofits. I didn't hear any of you say that. I didn't hear anyone out of the community say, you know what, we don't want to fund nonprofits anymore. We want to spend our money on something else. No one said that. So I thought I would give you a list of what that kind of looks like. And after talking to some more people, well, there's, there's other funds that aren't on my list. I think you need to have a council discussion before you get very deep into the budget about what you truly intend to cut. And you need to reach out to folks in the community and say, you know, is this a valuable service to you? Or should we close the Lompoc Museum? Should we cease funding advertising to bring people here for tourism dollars, which then put money back into our community? Should we take away funding from the library? Where, where should we take away that funding? That's a discussion you need to have. Not on a piece-by-piece basis. This evening, I urge you to put this money in and let's go forward because there are so many time-critical issues. And it would be a great deal of work for our volunteers to start all over a second time. I don't think you want to see the five guys and gals on the commission put another sixty hours in because the plan changed. But please, take the time, schedule a discussion. It takes three of you to put that on the agenda and talk about what we truly are going to do and get a better list. That's, the one I gave you is just to give you an idea. Ask the city staff to provide you a list with what that means. Do we want to have a Flower Festival parade? Do we want to cancel it? Do we want to have a Flower Festival? Do we want to increase their cost? And so many other questions that you need to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Give a close public comment, bring it back to the council. Sullivan, one quick question for you. You had earlier mentioned that one of our options is to possibly fund just the first year. And then if we did that, what happens then?
Then, at least the Human Services Commission wouldn't have to go back to the drawing board for this year. But next year, they'd be with about seventy thousand to fund when we get two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand in application. in applications. So it's going to make their job harder.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to share that CDBG is on an annual budget.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, discussion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Before we go to the council discussion, I just wanted to, a statement was attributed to me that I didn't say, and I just want to make sure we're clear. I think it's, I don't normally correct every statement, I get misquoted a lot, but when it's this substantial, I want to make sure the record's correct on that. Mr. Len said that, quoted me as saying, "We aren't going to fund nonprofits anymore," and that's not what I said. What I said was that the budget as delivered had taken away the funding for other, for outside, other outside agencies. I specifically said, "My hope was, if we adopt the entirety of my recommendations, including the tax measures going forward, that we'd be able to restore that funding." So it wasn't the case that I was looking to, to not fund nonprofits any, anymore. It was matters I had clarified, looking at our own mission, and whether we were able to afford that versus against funding other people's, other agencies' missions. But all of those statements are valid there, that, you know, it's ultimately a matter of choosing amongst your priorities, wherever they exist, whether internal or external to other organizations. But I just want to be clear on that one piece. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Okay, back to the council. Councilman Osborne.
Well, I understand that we have a budget crisis, and we've got a lot of work to do. I think it's unfair to take away something from a budget, but several budgets that have already been set around receiving these funds. Secondly, it is proven research that the funds that go into these nonprofit agencies and the assistance they give to our citizens helps reduce the workload on our public safety, both law enforcement and fire department. If people are under duress and not getting services and assistance through some of these nonprofits, they do become a burden on our other services. So I understand we may need to examine the 18, 19 budget and potentially not have as much to give them, but this time, I think we need to move forward on this and make sure that they get what they expected to maintain their services, rather than pull everyone down with the decisions we've got to make as a city this year.
Thank you. Councilman Starbuck.
Yeah, before I make a motion here, I'd like to just make a few comments. The young lady here from the Pharmaceutical, Pharmaceutical Access, they were allotted $5,300. They've returned over $100,000 of disposable income back into the city. This is the first of 18 light items here. You go down through here, Meals on Wheels, probably not a big return to the public offer, but it's the right thing to do. Mark's House, North County Rape Crisis, the list goes on and on. After-school programs for kids, I mean, I think we can squeeze $25,000 this year to augment the rest of the CDBG. So I'd like to make a motion that we would accept staff recommendation with the one-year $25,000 allocation to the Human Services Commission. Is that a correct motion, Christie? Does that cover everything?
Yes, that should work fine.
I'll give you a second. Okay, discussion, oh, Councilmembers.
I also concur with Councilmen Mosby and Starbuck that it's a valuable service. I think that if you look at the statistics of Lompoc and our growth pattern, you know, we're still listed as a financially distressed city, and I think we have people here that have great needs. So I would also be an advocate of providing these services for, at least for this year's budget, because I just think there's a lot of people out there that really need the hand to, to move forward. So I would be in favor of that also.
Okay. I'm not going to disagree with anything that the four of you have said, because I agree with everything you've said. I'm just thinking to myself, there's a dozen other people out there that don't want to talk to us later this evening, and are going to be trying to please tell their stories as well. So I have a question for the city manager. I believe I know the answer, I just want some clarification. So if we approve this, even though it's, well, it's a small amount, but that $25,000 would come out of the excess of $40,000 or $50,000?
Where we'd be standing right now is it would take our excess, our anticipated excess as the draft currently sets, and it's recognized, that draft may end up being somewhat fluid. As it currently sets, our, our net operating surplus would be at $21,000 rather than $46,000.
Okay. So anyone else out there? See what we have to work with now? I'm just, I'm just saying. Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to item number, is it nine? Yeah, item number nine, which is a council request, discussion regarding R2 multifamily residence occupancy, is this Chief Latipah?
I do not have a PowerPoint. However, the staff report actually mirrors some of the key points out of the PowerPoint from a date that I can't recall, when I first presented the fine, the retooling of the R2 program. Since that time, the program has been moving forward fairly smoothly. You've got a lot of legal sites in here, a lot of health and safety code sites, all of which basically mandate that we carry out the charge. There seems to be some confusion about this program with some folks out in our community, and I believe some of it comes from what's been going on in other cities. This R2 program is not single-family dwellings, it is not duplexes, it's triplexes and above as are classified within the state fire code. It is not Airbnb, it is not VRBO, it's, it's none of those. It's simply what we're required to do by law, and what we've been doing sporadically over the last few years. As you see in my staff report, which was actually penned several weeks ago, at that time, we had carried out inspections in several of the facilities, and some of them very large, as a matter of fact. I won't give you addresses or names, but the program is doing exactly what we hoped it would do. We're interacting with the property managers, with the owners, we're, we're sharing information with them. Most of them have selected to do self-inspections. Our program was actually based on not getting into every single unit, but doing random. So far to date, we've only had one person, one manager, ask if we would do the inspections, and we sat down, showed that individual what the process was, and they have decided to do them themselves, which is obviously more convenient for the tenants. The one complaint that continues, and it's not a loud cry, but is the fees. They don't want to pay the fees. I get that. However, our fees are time-in-motion, and they're extremely reasonable. What I have committed is, once we have a year, my recommendation as I leave, once we have a year of this program under our belts, and we've gotten into a majority of the facilities, we go back and take a look at time-in-motion and see if there should, in fact, be an adjustment to the fee. Understand, it starts at $135. So this is actually meant to be an update, that's how I took it, that's pretty much how I wrote most of it. It is not a policy, it's not an ordinance, it is within the state codes, and you can see all the health and safety code citations that charge the fire department, the fire chief with carrying these out. I will tell you that in addition to improving our relationships with the property managers, we have in fact come across some serious concerns that have been corrected as a result of the inspection process. And because our, our, our way of compliance is education, we get compliance via education with fire inspections. So it, in my opinion, it's working exactly the way it should. The phone calls to my office have dropped dramatically from when we first showed the PowerPoint. So I'm available, I am the only staff person left on this program here tonight. Chief Bray is here, and I let him answer the questions, but, no? Okay. Captain Nunez has done all the heavy lifting on this program with the fire marshal and retired chief Mike Brown, who's no longer with the department. So I'll attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Mosby.
Page three of five of your staff report, in the middle of the full second paragraph, you're referring, referencing the exemption in section 13146.2, and it says, "Seems intended to exclude." Could you, you know, it's a little ambiguous, I mean, I sat down with the city attorney going over that, and I know that there's a level of interpretation involved, and maybe you can help explain what they mean by "seems intended to exclude only single-family dwellings."
I, I will let the city attorney answer that, but I will tell you, the R2 classification per the state code is triplexes and above.
Thank you, chief. And, Mr. Mayor, I think it'd be best for me to respond to that paragraph, because I actually wrote the paragraph, the chief didn't. The state code specifically says that the, a fire department or a, the city has to impose and, and provide inspections of all the buildings in the city in order to enforce the state building code. There's a reference in there that, that it says, and in that statement of the regulations that have to be enforced, the regulations for all types of buildings, including lodging houses, apartment houses, and dwellings. Those are the specific words, lodging houses, apartment houses, and dwellings. Then when you look at the section that says that the city has to also, if they have a building code, have annual inspections of all of those same buildings, except dwellings. And then when you look further in that same code, the exception is for single-family dwellings. So the only rational interpretation that could be made of putting those sections together is, single-family dwellings, the city is not required, it's not that it's prohibited to, but it's not required by the state code to do annual inspections of single-family dwellings.
And I believe, and I think you, that's one of the levels of, of question that comes is, is that putting these several codes together and getting that interpretation.
I, I can understand any time words are put on a page that interpretation could be made, but I don't think there's another reasonable interpretation to be made of the way that code is put together.
And it'd be nice if they put in there exactly that verbiage, where it says dwelling, it says single-family dwelling.
If I was writing the codes, they'd all be different.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't disagree. Councilman Vega.
Chief, the trigger point for all these inspections was actually the master fee schedule, am I correct, regardless of any ordinances or policies, or which mandated these inspections on, over triplexes and above? Because it had to be cost-effective for you guys also. Is that correct?
The, the trigger point was us seeing an increase of incidents in these types of occupancies and us reevaluating the inspection program. Once we started to reevaluate the inspection program, then we realized that we had not been doing an appropriate job, and then when we dug deep into the codes, we realized we'd not been following a state mandate. There, the master fee schedule has been around for a while, it was most recently updated a couple of years ago. It wasn't the trigger to get us started, however, it is the mechanism by which permits are issued and the mechanism by, by which the inspections are tracked.
Is it not true that the inspections were triggered because of that, again, with the fee being on, on a residential basis versus commercial? Is that what not triggered? Your multi-unit inspections, and it seemed like you never did it, you were never doing it before, a couple of years back?
We were doing it before. We were doing it sporadically and not very efficiently.
And, and it's still sporadic? I mean, you know, can you guys tell me exactly, are you guys ahead of the game here on getting your money back on these inspections?
That's not the way we track it. We track it by how many properties we're touching, how effective we are, and there's not enough experience yet to determine whether or not it's cost-neutral. It hasn't, it hasn't been operating long enough.
So you're saying that fee was never extended to, or to residential prior?
R2 classification, the fees were on the books. There were a lot of fees on the books that were never, ever, that were never executed for permits.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Starbuck.
Chief, while I have you up here, I've got some of the old handouts from a while back, and one of them involved the smoke and carbon monoxide alarms in existing dwellings. And it says, "In every existing residential dwelling in the state, you're required to have a smoke alarm and carbon monoxide alarm." And it says here that the trigger for this is any time that you're having alterations, repairs, or additions, having evaluation exceeding $1,000. So what does this do all of a sudden if somebody comes and pulls a permit to do something, a roof? Now they're going to allow who into their home to inspect for a fire alarm and a carbon monoxide?
They self-certify.
Pardon?
They said, so apples and oranges. And, and that sample went out, there was a couple samples in the packet that didn't get reviewed closely enough, that's one of them. That is the self-certification that we use on the building side when people pull a permit. It's a state law, and all they have to do is self-certify, and it's done. We don't go in.
They have the smoke alarm and the carbon monoxide alarm, and so it's not like all of a sudden you have somebody looking at your roof, and then they're going through your bedroom here?
When they pull the permit, they just self-certify.
Anyone else? Open this up to the public comment.
Nicholas Gonzalez, I'm speaking on behalf of the Santa Barbara Rental Property Association. Some of the early contention, I, I know that Councilman Vega attended, I know other council members attended, but the Rental Property Association had a town hall meeting, and the reason that we had the town hall meeting is because initially, we couldn't find anywhere within city documents that explained when the inspection process started and, and the new fees. We were directed to the fee inspection list, and we understood that. But the biggest contention with the, with the Rental Property Association and the almost 80 to 100-plus property owners that showed for the town hall meeting was the initial, and we can get some clarification, requirement to enter the units. I want to read just a quick thing of why we were concerned, and it says, "Chapter One," and I'm reading from the fire code that was adopted as the basis for enforcement, "Chapter One is largely concerned with maintaining due process of law and enforcing the regulations contained in the body of the code. Only through careful observation of the administrative provisions can the code official reasonably expect to demonstrate that equal protection under the law has been provided." So when you opened up to the internal inspections of the property, the, there was very big concern because now there was a discriminatory effect of whose property you were going into. Also, many of the owners were concerned with undue search and searches of their, of their properties. So there was a big concern. We could have had this place packed tonight, again, but we understood that there was no action, that there was going to be a discussion. But for the rec- But for the record, the association is in opposition to the program as it was originally presented at the town hall by the then-acting representative of the fire department. Because at that point, we understood that it was going to be for duplexes, that was going to require access into individual units. And of course, there was this variance in the fee structure. We had one individual that had, I believe it was a sixteen-unit apartment complex and was charged six hundred and something dollars. And then another unit, so there was, there seemed to be, and I don't know that you've adopted for multiple units, the fee schedule. I know there is a fee for the inspection, but not for the multiple units. So there were a lot of unanswered questions that we have. So we will still be coming back to the council and asking for, for clarification. There's also a definition of very specific words within the code, and we differ in our opinion, in our opinion on, on dwellings and the inspections internally of that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on this item, bring it back to council. This was a discussion item, but it, the recommendation is to discuss the subject it provided and give input, if any, of the next steps should, should be taken. Are there any steps that we want to direct staff? Councilmember Mosby.
I just had one more question for the city attorney. And in referencing the, in the staff report of the R2, I think it's important to understand that when, when you reference, or the R2 reference here is not about the city zoning. This is about the, the state use code. So it gets a little confusing when people think in R1, R2, this is on the state. But where in either seventeen nine twenty-one or the other multitudes, the codes, does it reference the R2 designation?
It doesn't use a reference to R2. It uses a reference to dwellings, lodging houses, apartment houses, and single-family dwelling.
Okay.
If I may.
In the, in the sections that you just mentioned.
Right. When, when you follow the trail of the health and safety code into Title nineteen, which contains the fire code, that's where the definitions, the fire codes and the building codes contain the definitions. And yes, some people do confuse it with zoning. I, I give you that. So when I gave you the PowerPoint, which I promised I wouldn't do tonight, I had the definition right out of the fire code in there, and the R2 is defined. Residential occupancies containing more than two dwelling units where the occupants are primarily permanent nature, including apartment houses, boarding houses, convents, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, monasteries, and vacation timeshare properties. That's right out of the code.
Right. In seventeen nine twenty-one, also, the, the dwellings that it references in here and apartment houses and stuff are those that fall straight in to the R2 classification. Apartment houses, dwellings, and buildings and structures, especially their two, motels, lodging houses, hotels, those are R2, right? Those are R2.
Are, are you asking me, are they R2 based on the code that the fire chief just said, or R2 based on our zoning code?
No, no. R2 based on the state. State code.
They're R2 based on what the chief just said. There is no R2 reference in the sections that you just mentioned.
Right. Only, only the, those, those units, those types of units which are R2s, motels, hotels.
Motels, hotels are R1s.
R1s, okay. So there is a reference in seventeen nine twenty-one of the R1s, then. All right. Thank you, Chief. Didn't get to thank you before, the, the mayor did, but, but thanks for everything you've done for us.
You're welcome. Okay. Bring it back to the council. Do we want to give any further direction, or was this presentation acceptable to everyone? You're off the hook. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number ten, which is a council request, again, by Councilmember Mosby. It's a presentation of city stormwater business inspection program. This is Ms. Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I need to get my. But. Oh. Which. Yes, and she got it. Where did it go? It's, it's on the agenda.
Stacy, do you want to, do we want to take a five-minute break?
Sure. He says it's less than five minutes.
Okay.
It's here. It's here. Okay. Yeah, and it's only two slides, too. So. Which is the next one? Let's see. Okay. So briefly about the stormwater business inspection program and associated fees. In October of two thousand and eight, and let's see if I can get this out. Yeah, in October of two thousand and eight, the Central Coast Regional Board, Water Quality Control Board, placed the city of Lompoc under a small municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permit. At that time, and in that process of the early days, they informed us that as a part of the program, we would end up needing to inspect businesses as a part of the stormwater determination as to whether or not they would have illicit discharges or potential sources of pollutants. And then in July two thousand and thirteen, the state water resources control board issued a statewide requirement for all communities to inspect businesses in its revised two thousand and thirteen Phase Two MS4 permit. And the funding to conduct these activities were not provided by the state. As a part of that, the city of Lompoc, in compliance with state law, has begun a business inspection program. And in order to recoup a portion of the cost of the program, the city council adopted a hundred and ten-dollar fee for each business inspection in its master fee schedule, and the fee schedule became effective on March fifth of two thousand and sixteen. Business inspection program has been going on for about a year. And each inspection, each business inspection is charged the hundred and ten-dollar fee, but if we need to revisit it, they aren't charged an additional fee. It's a one-time fee. And this fee is for the permit term, which is a five-year permit term. This term will be up in two thousand and eighteen, July of two thousand and eighteen. So we would not anticipate inspecting or charging the fee more than once between now and July of two thousand and eighteen. We don't know what the future MS4 permit is going to look like, and we don't really have much input on it. The state just comes down and says, "Here are your requirements." So we can't totally anticipate what might happen in the future. Thank you, and are there questions?
Councilmember Mosby.
You, you said there what a lot of the people are feeling out there, a lot of the businesses, and that is simply you don't know what's coming down the pipe either. And I think that's the questions that I got from a number of people in the public is, what's going on? And that's why I made the request for this, is so we could try to explain what's going on and why what's happening is happening. But maybe you can explain a little bit what the inspection, what it entails.
Okay. All right. The inspection is primarily to entail what, well, for starters, the state has also stipulated which businesses you're going to inspect first. And so there's a group of businesses that we need to make sure we inspect, and they started off with automotive. And so as a part of that, any automotive-related business had to be inspected to look at their site, what's the drainage on their site, where would stormwater go? Where are possible sources of pollutants? Are there uncovered oil storage areas or something like that? Are they tracking a bunch of dirt or other materials off-site where it's going to get into the street, which in Lompoc is our storm drain? And so basically, the inspector will go through and look at those areas where, and identify those things which could be improved. And these, this is not a penalizing type of thing. We're trying to encourage improvements in sites, and we're also trying to assist the property owner, because in the end, if the property owner is discharging pollutants, stormwater pollutants, then they become liable. So helping to educate them about what it is that might cause a problem for them is most of our process. We provide information, written materials, on what they can do to reduce their exposure to stormwater pollution.
And I believe some of the items that I've heard is like, there was outside gas engines and to cover them with tarps and to make sure that it weren't draining off-site. And I believe you said education, and that's the important part. A lot of this inspection is an education process. I think it's important that we get it out to the public to understand, first of all, being mandated by the state, and you're here to, to help them with an education. And a lot of people don't realize that when you're in a business and someone from the government says, "I'm here to inspect," you don't realize that a lot of what you're trying to do is help educate, because some of these fines can be pretty strict if I'm, right? Can you?
That is correct.
Help me out with some of the, the value, the, the dollar numbers on the fines that might be?
The dollars and numbers on the fines can range from approximately twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand a day. And so they are severe, and there are state and federal laws that apply. And we don't want to be in a position of having to even be concerned about those things. We want to stop the pollution before it ever happens.
Right. And it's, again, mandated by the state, and there is a level of education they were trying to do. And I think one of the confusions is people didn't realize, and they would talk to other people in the business, and they, we'd find out this person was here and they're like, not understanding, well, who's next? And I believe that was one of the complications you guys had as well, is who was going to be next, right? You said automotive was first, and who, who was second or third?
There's a wide, the automotive, anything automotive was first. The second group was anything commercial or industrial manufacturing, any kind of, retail is not a priority generally, but anything that involves the production of something is a high priority for the state. And so we go through, they also wanted specifically to educate landscaping services. And so they have their list, recycling services. So we're going through the list.
And it, maybe it would help out as well to, to come to, to council with presentations periodically as you're getting updates, because generally, most of the people were receptive, but they were like, what's going on? And I think that's the important thing, is to get, you know, in sake of transparency and getting the word out there, that's why, reason why I asked for this to move forward, is so we could understand. And understanding, because it's coming down from the state, you're not fully sure what's coming up next. And I think it's important for the people to know, but as of right now, it's not looking to be an annual inspection, or is it?
At this time, under this permit, it is not an annual inspection.
Key words, "at this time."
At this time, because under the new permit and the way the state approaches things, they have an anti-backsliding policy. So they never want to move backward and not permit, nor not require something that they've required before, but they're happy to require more. So while we don't anticipate or hope for any additional requirements, we can't say that it won't happen.
Okay. If you do hear something, please come forward so we can help get the word out as well. Likewise, who, who in the state, maybe the, the business owners could write to? What department came up with this?
The state water resources control board.
Okay. So those people who are out there listening who, who feel that, you can write some letters to them. And again, we are, and you are, and your people are acting more as the messenger and trying to help educate. I guess it also involved some of the people who were a little intimidated with the photography aspect that was coming along with it, and maybe you can.
Okay. The reason that we wanted to photograph sites was because we have a lot of businesses in town, and a quick photograph can say, oh, yes, I know that business. It also gives us a static of where that business was at that time, because we may not be back to re-inspect for another four years. And so how has it changed? And a lot of times, what we're finding is, you know, even in a period of a year, and we're working off the business tax certificates, the ownership has changed. So things change quickly in the business world, and we're finding that out. And so the photographs are primarily just to either document a situation where you need to clean out a storm drain inlet, or to just say, okay, this is the business that I inspected.
And maybe I can just give you a little suggest, friendly suggestion is when you come to the business, explain that and, and, and make sure that you're asking at the level, because it can be very intimidating when you're wanting to get in a back room of somebody's place and take photos. And some, not like people are having something to hide, it's just that level of independence, and people like to have their independence. So maybe, you know, we continue to work together and, and let the people know that it's an educational aspect, mandated from the state, and in this case, for sure, the government's here, you guys are here to try to help and to keep from these big FD fines.
That's correct. And then the other factor is that primarily, because we're talking about stormwater, most of the areas of concern are outside the business, not so much inside the inner workings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Stacy, I'm just going to make a couple of comments. This is feedback I got from, from various people in the community about this, and I don't imagine that you're going to have a lot of these answers here. But the first one is, we have a, a business in town that cuts rock stone. They were told that they couldn't allow the powdered rock to be discharged into a, a area because, you know, it was powdered rock already. So you've got to hold this, you can't discharge. I mean, you know, putting rock on rock, it, it didn't make any sense, and it caused quite a confusion with these people. They were told to take inventory, store it inside. The other was run off of dirt into a dirt ditch. It's happening. Why are we making people contain dirt that's going to run into a dirt ditch? It didn't make sense. And then leaves. Leaves are stormwater. It's, some of this is over-the-top ridiculous. I just wanted to throw it out. I mean, I can understand if we're discharging oils, petroleums, photochemicals, et cetera, but this is, we're talking dirt into dirt. We're talking powdered rock into sand, leaves. It, it didn't make sense to me why we were going this far.
Okay. Well, the, if I might explain, the federal and state laws, the Clean Water Act, specifically talks about different types of pollutants, and they include powdered rock, dirt, leaves, and many other substances that which most people don't necessarily think of as being a pollutant. And so they also have a classification system of plans for whole watershed basins and for rivers. And at this point, our river, when it does run, is listed as impaired for sediment, which could be a, your rock's powder, could be your dirt, definitely, and also nitrates, which would be what would be a breakdown product potentially from the leaves. And so they are concerned, and we will be, in the future, held to limitations on substances for which they feel our watershed and river and San Miguelito Creek are impaired. And so we are probably, you know, moving forward in the future toward a time when we have actual thresholds over which we can't exceed. And these substances will contribute to that.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, for clarity, I, I think it's, it's good that we educate the, the city and, and all our inspection programs, and it makes us even pay attention closer to our fee scheduling. When we implement or add a new fee, we also probably should make sure that the transparency's there for the public, for businesses, and the hardships that it could also impose upon these businesses. It's great that we stir this up and we explain why they, when I know me previously having a restaurant here in town, and they showed, all of a sudden, everybody showed up and, oh, well, you know, can you send us this piece of paper back? When we implement or add a new fee, we also probably should make sure that the transparency's there for the public, for businesses, and the hardships that it could also impose upon these businesses. It's great that we stir this up and we explain why they, when I know me previously having a restaurant here in town, and they showed, all of a sudden, everybody showed up and, "Oh, well, you know, can you send us this piece of paperback?" You know, it doesn't sit well to have someone else come in your business and scrutinize, and also with the possibility of a fine or whatever, all of a sudden, just because all of a sudden, yes, the state mandated it, but I know for a fact that that fee schedule also allowed you guys to move forward and do it, even though it's not consistent. You could go there every four years, you could go there every two years. So it's the same thing as the inspection program for multi-units. You know, it's very sporadic. You guys could basically pinpoint and target restaurants. It may be on the list, which maybe they are up on the list. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, okay? But automotive, restaurants, whatever. Again, we look at compliance, but then again, we have to have our feelers out for people that are trying to make a living also here, you know? So sometimes, it's not just what can we do to justify our job, it's what can we do to alleviate the fear factor of inspections within the city? There's times that maybe even the police department, when they pull somebody over and say, "Hey, you know, you need to do this, but when I come back next time, make sure it's done." You know what I'm saying? To justify something. Once in a while, we need to reach out so that we can alleviate that fear that Councilman Mosby is saying is out there in the businesses. All of a sudden, somebody comes into your private business, could be a mom and pop. I'm not sure exactly how the inspection program comes up for the franchises here in town, you know? Is the same inspection program implemented for the franchise-run business in town, or the corporate-run businesses, or do they run by a different rule, standard? Okay? Sometimes if it was a Walmart, if it was an Applebee's, if it was whoever, do you guys typically leave them alone because maybe they're new and you don't think they'll dump anything down the drain because they have a stricter management? Or do we target the mom and pops a little bit more? These are all little things that we need to be aware of so that we don't feel that people are targeted. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't pick and choose. We go through the business tax certificates and pick all of a category. And so the inspection form for each grouping is the same, and the things that we're looking for and the educational material for everyone within that group is the same, whether they're large, whether they're small, whether they're a startup, or whether they've been in business for many years.
You also mentioned the fee schedule does change a little bit if you have to go back and you find something that there's an infraction or something. You mentioned something about there's an extra charge.
No, actually, I, what I said was that, at this point, we have one fee, and if we have to go back, we do not charge an additional fee.
Oh, is that right? Okay, got you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. You're from Public Wando, anything?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is George Bedford, community rabble-rouser. I have a business in town also that got inspected. And I'll just give you an idea of what happens. We have Sunset Auto Center, no commercial, but we have Sunset Auto Center down 1300 North H Street. We have a pretty good tire business. When the inspector came down, we were told our used tires, the takeoffs from our customers that we take off, normally, we would stack them up, and then somebody would come by every few days, pick them up and take them away. That's no longer allowed. They have to be undercover. The reasoning is, we have morning fog here, and the debris that my customers bring in with their tires, the fog could actually get in there and take it off and deposit it on the dealership's lot. So those tires can't be outside at all. But I would dare to find one of you up there that can find, we had to give up a productive area in our dealership to store these tires. We had no inside storage at that time. But if you walk around town or drive around town, you'll find lots of places where you'll see tires lined up 100 yards along a fence, not covered. So I'm wondering, have they just not got to these facilities? The second thing is oil storage. We have a large storage tank, it's approved, it's a double-walled, it's got high vents. We don't pour oil into it. We have to now suck the oil out of the container that we took it out of the vehicle and then put it in that container. Then when the people come to recycle it, they have to suck it out of there. So it's not, there's no pouring, spilling, none of that's allowed anymore. But I guarantee it's selective inspection. The other situation comes, now it has to be not only a double-wall sealed, but now it's got to be covered. Okay, the fee's a hun, what, $110 for the inspection? That covering and the facility around it to contain that double-walled tank is going to be $20,000. Well, guess who pays that? It's not Robin Hood up in Sacramento and his merry band of socialists, it's my customers, okay? And everybody in town's going to be caused to pay all this. And it's not just Sunset Auto Center, it's every small business in town that's struggling to stay in town that has to deal with this kind of crap from the state of California. We live in a communist state, and the city's turning into just as big a communist as they are. So thank you very much, have a wonderful evening, I enjoyed being here.
Thank you, Mr. Bedford. See you tomorrow night. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. There's no action requested on this. Anyone have any final comments? Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 11, which is under the council request. This is by Councilmember Starbuck. It is a status report on the City of Lompoc First-Time Home Buyers Assistance Program.
Good evening. Almost ending on a high note of a productive program we've had. This is the Lompoc Home Buyer Assistance Program, and council wanted some feedback on how it's doing. So again, I'm Kristi Alarcon, Community Development Program Manager here at the city. The Lompoc Home Buyer Assistance Program, which was approved by city council back in July, we have $1,070,000 for loan and grant funds, and $52,500 for all of the components that went into creating this program and the continued marketing, underwriting, and education components involved with the program. That $1,070 was estimated to provide 20 down payment assistance loans and 20 closing cost grants. The loans are $50,000 per household maximum, and they accrue interest at 3%. And then the $3,500 maximum closing cost grants to those eligible home buyers are the other component of this program. Who can participate? An eligible home buyer must be a first-time home buyer. They cannot have owned any other residential property. They have to be a U.S. citizen or a documented resident alien, living or working in the county of Santa Barbara, and they must have a household income not exceeding 80% of the area median income. We just received updated income limits, so that for a four-person household is now $72,050. The loan fund balance right now is $820,035. We have closed escrow on four loans. Again, the maximum loan amount is $50,000. We're staying under that, just barely on one, but we've been staying under that amount because, again, it is dependent on the home buyer's need. It's, I think there was a lot of speculation that, oh, if you're offering $50,000 maximum, everybody's going to get $50,000. Well, no, it's what they need to make that loan affordable. The grant fund balance is $59,500. There are four, not three, closing cost grants that it funded, and those were all needed. The following is an overview of the four loans that have closed escrow and the sales prices that were necessary for those households at 80% AMI to qualify. You'll see that, you know, the kind of top price there is $300,000, and I think some of, I think those two, they actually brought a little bit of their own money into this game, so, which is not typically, I should say, a lot more of their own money. That's not typically what we see with these households that are at 80% of the area median income. So four low-income families have closed escrow on their first homes in Lompoc. Each of those families are not paying more than 30% of their income in housing costs, and they are investing in the community they work, own business, or have grown up. Several more families are income-certified, and they're out there shopping for their first home in Lompoc. The challenge that we're seeing is there's a limited stock of housing that's below that $300,000 or where they need to be for these families to afford those units. So if anybody out there is interested in the program, contact People Self-Help Housing. We did contract out this program, so they would be the ones to give a call to or email and get on the education side, because you do have to complete an education program, and you do have to get income certified before you can start shopping for a home. If you guys have any questions, I'm available.
Councilor Starbuck.
It appears to be a success so far.
So far.
And as I recall, we had over $3 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but we chose only to go out with, I think, was it a million or a million five or something?
It's a million for loans, which estimated to do 20, and then the $3,500 for 20 households.
Right. Because of the money for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is really money that is for programs like this, would it behoove us to transfer some more money into the Affordable Housing First-Time Home Buyer?
I wouldn't worry about doing it at this time. I think that maybe through, when we get to that point-
Are you going to be the one that will tell us when we're at that point?
Yes. I don't know if it's something, I'll talk to Brad, I don't know if that's something we want to incorporate into the next two-year budget cycle, or, because we're four loans in, and really, it depends on the market. So if for some reason, people are listing more homes at or below $300,000, and we really start using all those funds, then I'll know I need to come back to council earlier, and if not, try to probably incorporate it into that process.
Right, well, see, the beauty of this program is, is we're not giving money away for low-income housing now. We're making housing affordable for people, and we're getting repaid. So the more money we can put out there, even with the 3% or whatever, the better the program eventually down the road will be. So I mean, we don't want to wait till the last minute with it, but thank you.
I wouldn't wait till the last minute. But again, like I said, when you pool what's out there available for our qualified people, I think there's about 11 now that are income-certified and ready to go. They're out there making offers and trying to find their lifetime home that they want to live here in Lompoc, and they're just not being successful because the pool is so small.
Councilor Vega.
Kristi, can you kind of give us a couple of scenarios that have happened, you know, as far as timeframes from once you start to finish? And I'm sure there's a learning curve there from-
Sure.
You know, as far as inspections and having things done? I mean, is it, is it an extensive escrow timeframe that we're going through? I mean, in the beginning, was it, or is it better now, or?
Just like any program, when you're starting it up, there's hiccups along the way, communication issues, things like that. Fortunately for us, on the city staff side, our role is fairly simple, we're cutting the check. The housing, the People Self-Help Housing, they're doing all of the really tough work. They're doing the income certifications, the education, and then the back and forth with the realtor and the lender to make sure we have all the appropriate documentations that are required through escrow. In our first two escrows, I would say there was some communication issues. Luckily, with the outreach that we did as city staff and our ad hoc committee that we had formed, that was really good because it opened up that kind of, I like to think, friendly ability to communicate with each other. And I was able to have those realtors just contact me directly and say, "Hey, I'm having a little trouble, and, you know, I don't know that People Self-Help is being real responsive, and, oh my gosh, I'm right in the middle, someone's going to fall out of escrow," and all of these crazy concerns. And staff, I was able to jump in and kind of help work through those situations. And not huge deals. We require that, following the home inspection, that certain items be corrected. We don't want somebody who is earning 80% of the area median income buying a house that's dilapidated, or that they're going to have to do major repairs to and they don't have the money to do it. We can see that with their income flow and their debt-to-income ratio. So there are certain things that we do require are repaired. And that communication point and how to negotiate that, that's kind of where that timing was falling off. So it was just a little bit of re-education to the realtors, to the listing agents, to the selling agents, and sharing that information so they're aware they need to negotiate that component prior to it kind of getting into, so the seller's aware, "Yeah, I have to put all new smoke detectors, or I have to fix this door, or I have to close these electrical, open electrical outlets," or whatever it may be, or a new roof, just like the purchase process in anything.
Got you. And then, and then one of the basic requirements is that they come in with 3.5% of their own money, is that still correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they do, even though it's a home buyer assistance program? And then you have the other aspect of the closing cost part of it, but that's for paperwork and other things. Is that not correct? That's, that's how you split that up?
Right. So that 3, that $3,500 is not touching their, their required contribution. That's solely closing cost grants. Most of them, their closing costs are more than $3,500.
Now, the repair aspect of it, is that part of also the funds they can get from the city if the seller's not willing to do this in negotiations? Okay, or it's a requirement? Is that one of the hiccups, maybe, when the seller doesn't want to?
It could be. If I'm, if I was selling my house and I have one buyer saying, "I want you to put a new roof," offering me asking price, and I have another one saying, "I'll give you asking price, but you don't have to fix anything, I'm going to sell it to that guy."
No, I got you, but-
So that's, that's part of the issue here.
But you're running into inventory issues, right?
Inventory.
Correct, as far as purchase price? I'm just asking these questions, so, hey, maybe it's something, I'm not sure if it's something we can look at.
Yeah, we've even had some that are for sale by owner. So I think one of them was a for sale by owner, so those can be a little easier in some cases and not easier in other cases.
Got you.
That's a case-by-case basis.
Thanks very much, okay?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, this, well, let's see, we need public comment on this. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. This was just for discussion. Written communication?
Nothing.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Okay. (pause) If I can get everyone to take their seats. Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, everyone, we are now going to be discussing unfinished business, item number twelve. Then, I'll ask city clerk for rating communication, then we'll do item number six, just prior to oral communication. So it's twelve, go back to item number six, which was pulled from the consent calendar. Okay, item number twelve, discussion of possible approval of two thousand seventeen-nineteen budget, bi-a, bi-annual budget. Councilmember Osborne.
Mayor Lingel and fellow councilmembers, I believe this item is way too important to be a single agenda item on a single night, and I would like for us to consider converting this to budget meetings, maybe two, if, if, I think that would be appropriate, if not scheduling four and if we don't need all four. But I'd like to at least schedule them as budget sessions where that's all we focus on and give the community appropriate time to come and speak with us on focused portions of it rather than trying to squeeze it in at the end of a meeting.
Councilwoman Starbuck.
I'll agree with that, and I wanted to just make a couple of statements here, and then these are going to come at you in random order as notes. We're looking at a huge deficit, trying to maintain services. There's other ways than taxes. Raising TOT two percent, half percent sales tax increase, the six percent increase in utilities as a tax, these, these will never fly. I am very sure that coupled with what the state has done for taxes, it's, the school board looking at another half percent. What we need to do is fix ourselves without doing that. We, and the way that I think to do this is we need to stimulate our tax base, and I'm going to throw a couple of things out there I want the council to think about. I mean, we're surely not going to approve the budget tonight. We'd be lucky to get it done by one July, personally, I think, at this point. We need to raise the revenue to stimulate the tax base development and growth. So far, our only growth that's planned is to the north. This will have a minimal impact on our enterprise funds. We will not be able to provide services, the ones that we're really desperate for. Water, wastewater, that will go to Mission Hills Community Service District. We might get power, we'll have wastewater, obviously fire police, but it will probably wind up costing us money to grow to the north. The only thing that I can see that will raise any money for us would probably be the fact that we will have new residences that will shop in Lompoc, that will do something with our sales tax revenue base. I've been reading our CIP, and I've said it before, the capital improvement plan, if you have an elaborate capital improvement plan, you're going to have exceptionally high impact fees. Exceptionally high impact fees will stifle development. We have exceptionally high impact fees. I, I personally would like to make a proposal to the council that we look at doing away with impact fees, with the exception of water and wastewater, our critical enterprise funds that need it the most. Everybody goes ooh and ah, but I'm going to tell you, when we originally assessed impact fees in oh-three, to build one single-family home then in oh-three, there was eight thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars seventy-six cents per each unit. When we amended impact fees in eleven, to build a single-family home, a developer had to pay sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars per home. You start looking at what we have now, and the difference between oh-three and eleven was seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. The difference between, you know, eleven and what we currently charge is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Right now, it costs a developer to build a home eighteen thousand sixty-five dollars. Let's say he wants to build ten homes, add a zero on the end here, you know, it's, it's, impact fees are killing us. If we could get the incentive to grow, the logic is more use of water, more tie-ins to wastewater, we'll receive more property tax. It's, you look at these graphs that we have up here, and it is dismal, but the only way we're going to be able to fix this is to build homes. Homes that will contribute directly to our general fund, to our enterprises. I tell you, there's a lot of people that say, oh my God, no, this is, you know, we can't grow. We have a ten-million-gallon-capacity wastewater plant that we're all paying a lot of money. We're processing less than five million gallons, and that's including the Vandenberg Air Force Base and the village and residents here. Wouldn't it make sense to have a few million more gallons going into it so that we're not paying the exuberant fees that we are forced to pay right now? The sky's falling on us with water, oh, we're in a drought. Lompoc has had a lot of water, but we've been forced to follow the state guidelines on this drought. Now we're at a point where we're not selling enough water to pay for water. We're trying to hold the rates down on a per-unit, we had to raise the meter, but we got a plant that's running at, at half-capacity there also. It's time for the city to stretch its arms and grow. We always say it, we need incentives, get rid of the impact fees, give it a two-year window, let's do something, let's put some concrete on the ground, get some residents, and get some disposable income, and I think that our trend will sharply increase, and that's the way I'd love to approach this budget. The negative, negative, negative all the time is not going to work. It's time to grow.
Okay, we have not addressed councilman, oh, council, okay, remember, Councilman Osborne had a, has a request, we need a second and third if we're going to move forward with that. Councilwoman Vega.
Yeah, I also agree with Councilwoman Starbuck and Councilwoman Osborne here, because, you know, the growth alone, just utility increases alone will not get us out of all the hole that we're in. The state mandates have put us in, in a running-up-a-hill atmosphere, which we can't catch up. We have people here that are living here that are moderate income, and the statements that I've gotten here for people that aren't just the socialites, the country clubbers, the people that can't afford everything, is we can't get ahead in Lompoc. The jobs that have been produced here are not jobs that are, that are high-paying jobs, you know, we haven't worked on bringing the higher level of education to this town, you know, I'd, I'd love to see us being a little bit more of a college town, I know that's kind of a pipe dream, but, you know, I wish that we could bring those type of, that type of atmosphere here so that we can inspire our kids, our families, so that they want to stay here instead of want to get the heck out of here, okay? Everybody thinks we're just trying to turn this place into a retirement community, and from what I've seen, the groups that are, that have been empowered with stopping all growth instead of allowing us to be sustainable, just like Councilman Starbuck said, we have a wastewater plant, we have all our facilities that are ready, willing, and waiting for the growth that everyone has gone out of their way to stop. It's not all just about agriculture. Agriculture is very important, it's part of our staple here, but we also need the growth. We're people, we live here. Some of the housing that we have, we want people that will bring the, the businesses here. We have a few homes here that would, that they'd probably want to live in, but I think zoning and the updated zoning ordinances that we're working on right now, the planning commission working, are going to be really important to our growth. You know, everyone here that's in business is, is basically, outside of the franchises, are barely making it. I know a lot, most of the community that's in business, most of the mom and pops are here, and, you know, every time we impose a fee, which we think it's really nice that the state has imposed all these fees on people that are working for a living, who actually open to business, to create that dream so they could have that freedom, so they wouldn't have to punch a time clock for someone else, so the best job in Lompoc is actually working for the city of Lompoc. So basically, what we have to do is we have to restructure the way we think so that we can all move forward together. The city of Lompoc is not the enemy, they're, they're providing valuable resources and necessary things for us, but we have to all make sure that we're moving forward together instead of empowering ourselves just to, to take care of ourselves and, and forgetting about the people that are actually here that are on, if you go to a certain side of town, things change, people are having hard times. That's why I agree with the Human Services Commission, that there are a lot of people here that are having a hard time currently just paying for their utility bills. They are pro, constantly, whether you have money or you don't have money, they're getting the yellow slips, they're getting the red slips. The hardships can be noted and probably on file within City Hall back in the Treasury Department, so you can see exactly where the hardships are. These people on purpose not paying their bill and, that are doubling up, or are there, is there actually a hardship in because their wages there, or they have family, or, or their jobs just don't support, eh, all these additional increases? I really don't think that increase in utilities is going to buy our way out of this. So I do support the, the fact that we need other, a couple of other meetings in budgetary, in the budgetary aspect of it, and, and do, do create a list of things that we are going to support. to support, just like it was brought up earlier. We need to make that list and make sure that we clarify that what we're willing to support and what we're not willing to support, so that we can actually make good decisions. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilman Rosemore requested that we do not discuss, and we're 12 tonight, we bring it to a public meeting budget workshop at some later date. Do we have a, a date that we'd like to identify for the city manager? Councilmember Mosby.
I didn't hear say that we weren't going to discuss anything tonight, because I think I have a couple of quick points to discuss on this, but without a doubt, setting a schedule for four, four more meetings, I don't, I don't have any problem with that, but.
Well, I'll tell you what, we, we can discuss it, but what's going to happen then? Once I open this discussion up, a lot of people have been waiting for public comment, then we're going to have to have public comment, and these people will be back again with the same public comment. So, I mean, if, if we want to open it up for discussion, this meeting, we can do that.
I most definitely believe, and I believe the people who are here wanting for public comment should have opportunity.
Just realize, just realize that they're, they're going to be coming back for another meeting too, so.
I believe it's, they're right, so.
Of course. Okay, so, okay, so we're going to, you want to have a couple of points, but you still want to have?
I, I don't have any problem right now setting four more days on top of this, because I, I believe, you know, going through the last time, I think we took about every day we needed.
Okay, how do you want to do the dates? Do you want them to send out a Survey Monkey for us? Is it a Survey Monkey, is that what it's called? Survey Monkey, okay.
I was just going to offer up alternating Tuesdays and Thursdays that we weren't meeting to go ahead and calendar them, given if there's no conflicts and.
There you go, how about that? Let's make it simple.
You know, just to, we may want to load this up on the front, because it's going to take staff a while, you know, we're looking at a drop-dead date of basically one July, so the sooner we can load this up on the front to get something, I, you know, twice a week, it doesn't matter to me, Saturday.
Well, I do want to make sure that we don't schedule something Saturdays. Right now, I think are very difficult to ask our public to attend, given the number of things going on in May with graduations and.
No, I understand, but, you know, like I say.
I don't want to discourage public discourse, if that's one of the reasons we're having these, by scheduling on a day that we won't have participation. So, I was looking at our, next week, I will mention this, it's part of the update I'll give at the end, but this week's meeting for cannabis ad hoc is actually being moved to next week, so in looking at the next available dates, the first one is an off-week for council, is the 30th, so it'd be May 30th. Then the following Thursday would be June 1st, and then we'd have council meeting, and then have a Thursday of June 8th, and if necessary, then have the June, June 13th, and that would get us completed with enough time to potentially get back. I would hope that we'd finish the discussion before June 8th or 13th, that maybe we could really, really focus on the absolute priorities and really hear from the public what services they're most concerned about or willing to go without, so that we could make those decisions quicker, but I'd rather schedule the dates, and then if we don't need all the dates, we can, we can cancel the meetings.
We do it at 6:00, 6:30? Does it matter?
Mr. Mayor, council, I just want to check, there are some committee meetings scheduled in council chambers that we can obviously adjust, but I wanted to just bring that to attention of the group and the city clerk.
Okay, I'm just looking at my calendar here, so the, you're saying, starting with Thursday, the 25th?
No, the 25th, so I, I made a quick announcement that the 25th won't be available, because we're having to move the cannabis ad hoc meeting to that date. So the first available date is the off-week of Tuesday, May 30th, followed by Thursday, June 1st, and we'll have a council meeting on the 6th, so that makes Thursday the 8th available, and then Tuesday, the 13th. That would give us four dates, with the hopes of not needing all four dates, but they'd be scheduled, and we'd be completed in time to hopefully give enough feedback to staff.
Excuse me, council member, could we not do the 13th? That is a, a council, a commission meeting.
Okay.
And out of town.
And June 1st is also a commission meeting.
Okay.
All right.
So we have the 30th and the 8th.
I mean, we, we could reschedule our.
Well, that's the Economic Development Committee, so they'd probably have some input.
Yeah. Okay, so right now, we're down to two dates, the 30th and?
We could do later this week, since we're canceling the 18th, but I know that Councilmember Vega already has a conflict there, which is why we're moving the ad, ad hoc, so we're already down one member, so that's why I chose the first available date. There is, the 31st wouldn't work, because I know that that's a planning commission workshop.
Can we do two dates and then add the other two as we go, or?
Absolutely, I was just.
Would you guys be okay with just adding those two dates that we have available?
You know, maybe a suggestion here would be that we go ahead and just firm the 30th and the 1st, and then at the, those meetings, we could decide what, how far and what specific part of the budget we would like to look at then. Confirm, you know, two of them at least.
Yeah, I, I like that, so the 30th and the 8th.
30th and the 8th. 30th and the 8th.
Because we had conflicts on the 1st with commissions, and the 13th had a commission, large commission meetings in this room.
That's good. City manager, does that work with you and your staff?
I was trying to do some, let's go over that again, because I was checking. First of all, you said eight, May 30th, Tuesday.
May 30th.
Is session next, followed by Thursday, June 1st.
No, that's been canceled due to the Economic Development Committee's conflict with the room, unless we reschedule it.
Be June 8th.
So the next would be June 8th.
Thursday.
Yeah.
And then, is it just those two, or what's?
Right now, that's the only two that we've come up with.
That's fine. My other question is, do you wish to keep, keep the budget item on the regular agendas for the meetings, or do you want to remove them? It sounds, I was a little uncertain. Our plan was to have it scheduled for each council meeting until the budget's adopted, but do you want to leave it on for those nights, or not have it on for those nights?
We agree. I'm seeing some heads nod that we leave it on, so that we get an hour discussion in or something, but we limit it so it's not too late and it's not too long.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that would help us potentially cover, potentially smaller talk topics, or review something from the prior meeting.
Okay.
Six, eight.
We stick to the same time, Bob, or? 6:30. 6:30. 6:30 consistency. 6:30. Okay, so we have the dates of 5:30 and June 8th, 6:30 PM here at City Hall.
Yeah, 6:30 on, as a start time for each of those?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have some discussion, and we'll open up the public. Councilmember Mosby, you said you had some items.
Quickly, in, in the budget book that we have, assumes that the three taxes that we're going to support, or not support, we're going to educate and put on and move forward with, and it also assumes that they pass. So I think, and you got a million some odd in the book, so I believe that that is probably a step that maybe we're not going to go towards, but I think seeing the numbers that we have here complicates it. So I think we, we kind of learned from this before, because we did a budget before, anticipating selling a million dollars with a property, that didn't happen, and I believe that this should go with what we already have, not with what potentially will happen. So I think the numbers actually should be changed, showing that the taxes don't happen, so we can see the numbers there, at least, I mean, I, you don't need all the other colored pages and such in here, but seeing those numbers in the back without the taxes in there, so we can see how they align up. That's probably my, my first major discussion.
Anyone else? Okay, I have one item that I was going to bring up, and I'll bring it up now. It'll be for discussion, but I'll let everyone know what I'm thinking. You know, we've taken, we said no capital, or not, no equipment in this budget, we've taken everything out. Our number-one priority as a city is to protect our citizens. This past couple of weeks, we've had one fire truck operating, two down for repairs, which is obviously, hopefully you're concerned, you should be concerned, when our job is to protect you and your families, we have one of three fire trucks working. The budget as drafted right now, proposed, takes out our, our fire truck replacement that was due to be replaced this year. I don't know if it was, if it's overdue, if it's just due this year. I'd like to see that put back in, but I don't know where we're going to come up with the, was the proposal in there, Chief Ladepow? Why don't you come up, because I have a couple of questions for you. Okay, the estimated cost of the replacement for the fire truck we were originally going to put in for this budget.
Yeah, the, the engine plus all the equipment that goes on, it totals a little over $800,000.
Okay, $800,000.
It's five years overdue.
Five years, okay. And is it, it is a fact that we have been down to one fire engine several times during the past couple of weeks?
What we've, what we've had to do is activate the ladder truck as an initial response unit. It actually broke down the other day. Ladder truck is old, it's, we pushed it, and pushed it, and pushed it, because it's not used every single day. So the ladder truck had to be activated, the ladder truck broke down, we had two engines down. Once the ladder truck broke down, we had one structure engine running. As a stopgap, the crews quickly moved over to the brush engine, which doesn't have the same capability, just to keep the wheels turning, and the on-duty battalion chief worked with fleet, and they did some emergency repairs and got the ladder truck back in service. We're still down, we still have two engines in the shop.
Okay, so, Councilmember Mosby, I'll be with you. Go ahead.
What, what are they down from? I mean, they're.
We normally have, we normally run two frontline engines.
Are they burned-up motors? I mean, what's the complex?
Well, let's see. If I recall, we believe that one of them, the transmission, has gone. The other engine had a steering box issue, and they had to wait for parts. The foam unit also, I'm looking, where's Bray? Yeah, foam, foam unit and steering box, so it's not operational. Most of the parts are in for that, that's been down over two weeks. We don't know, we don't have a response yet. The, the engine with the possible transmission issue is up at shop in Santa Maria. And Mark, is that our reserve engine, or is that frontline? Okay, so that's, our backup engine is down, our primary engine out of station one is down, so the normal frontline that we have running is two, and we're running the truck and the rescue squad, obviously, the rescue squad takes a big load.
So we've, we've had the discussion about our trash trucks, and what, what's happening, because we have not replaced them in timely manner, and you know what? Even though it is not ideal, I could live without picking up trash for a couple of days, but I don't think our citizens can live with not putting out their home fire for a couple of days. So I think it's very important that we consider putting this fire, or the replacement of this fire engine back in the budget, and $800,000. Where is that going to come from? If ever a time that I've been on the city council was to justify to go into our reserve fund, this is the case. Going to our reserve fund, which the council made a choice a couple of months ago, that we were going to leave that $2 million as reserve in case of an emergency, this is an emergency, in my opinion. If we're not protecting the citizens of this community, which is our primary goal as a city, not a goal as a city, mandate as a city, to protect our citizens, we are not being fiscally responsible, we're not being responsible at all. So if we can't find the money someplace else, I'd like to see us consider using our reserve funds to purchase this fire engine, the replacement of fire engine, and direct city manager that puts someplace in the budget that we try to rebuild this reserve fund back up to the $2 million. But we need to replace that fire truck, or we're going to be paying consequences with the lives of some of our citizens. Councilmember Mosby.
You're talking about the economic uncertainty money?
Exactly right.
Because we should have a, some money in the reserve fund, account number 10, right? I mean, we.
Well, whatever.
Aren't we operating with 25% reserve?
That's up, Brad Stevens. We do, we do have some, we have some money, we have some reserves that will pay for this fire truck, that we have set aside. Not necessarily for a fire truck, uncertainty.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's little apples and oranges, of course, because trash trucks are paid, because it's an enterprise fund, so there's a little difference.
Sure, of, of course, no, but this scenario they've given you is, we found out what can happen if we put off purchasing our, replacing our trash trucks. They break down. This is what's happening with.
We got the 750 grand to tear down the pool, and wonder if we trade that one to, to get a fire truck instead of tearing down the pool.
I'd like us to stay on the issue right now.
I'm just saying, there's, you had some bond money.
Okay, so this is, this is one of the things that I'm going to ask McFerrwood. You have a legitimate comment there, maybe instead of staring down the, the old municipal pool, maybe we do that. But I think we have responsibility to our citizens to consider replacing this fire truck, because running on one fire engine in a city of 45,000, I don't know how many calls we have, is completely irresponsible on our part. So, at our discussions, I want this to be brought forward, I want it to be considered, that we at least authorize the city manager to authorize the replacement of this fire engine. Anything else before we go to public comment? Public comment on budget items. Okay, now, just so everyone knows, Amber, CEO of the Chamber Commerce, instead of having half dozen of their people come and spending three minutes, she's asked me to give her 10 minutes, and the other people will, are just there to support her, so they will not all be speaking. Is that correct, Amber?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So Amber has 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Good evening, Mayor Lingle, council members and city staff. I'm Amber Wilson, president and CEO of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. This is Bill Hewin, our chamber CEO, and Alan Grant, board chairman. We are here tonight to address a potential elimination of chambers funding from the city budget, and how it will impact our chamber, our membership, and our community. The Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce was formed in 1903, and has been dedicated to promoting the Lompoc Valley and the prosperity of all its businesses for over 100 years. The city of Lompoc and the chamber formed a mutually beneficial relationship in 1967. For 50 years, the city has weathered many storms, yet has never wavered in its support of our chamber. I want to acknowledge that we're aware of what a difficult position you're in, and do not envy the very challenging decisions that you're all facing. To that end, I'd like to thank council for its long-term support. The Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau is an organization of business people within the community dedicated to maintaining a favorable, favorable business climate and safeguarding the interests of its 435 members. The chamber accomplishes cooperatively what the individual business enterprise, with the visual, individual business enterprise, what that business could not achieve alone. As stated in our city contract, the city desires to promote the Lompoc Valley as a tourism destination and for business development, and desires that all local business owners and entrepreneurs are provided with timely information regarding the establishment and the expansion of local businesses, thereby enhancing the general state of our local economy. The chamber is organized and equipped to carry out the promotional, tourism, and business assistant activities desired by the city, and has special local knowledge, expertise, skill, and facilities for promotional work. Many of the events and programs that take place in the Lompoc Valley are chamber-supported programs. At present, our chamber supports seven active committees who facilitate a variety of different endeavors and activities. Leadership Lompoc Valley has been, has been developing our community leaders for more than 30 years. Anyone on city council, graduate of Leadership Lompoc Valley? Thank you. The intent for the class is to become broadly informed about issues of importance attendees normally would have not had the opportunity to explore. normally would have not had the opportunity to explore, and thus allow participants to become more effective leaders and members of our community. Restaurant Week, a program operating through the Chamber Shop Long Poak Shop Small Committee, attracted over a thousand diners to local eateries, with one restaurant serving over four hundred Restaurant, Restaurant Week menu items that week. Website visitors downloaded close to twenty-eight thousand menus from participating restaurants. Our Shop Long Poak Shop Small programs include Small Business Week, I Love Long Poak Window Contest, Scarecrow Contest, Old Town Trick or Treat, and the Holly Jolly Jubilee. Who could live without that? The Hispanic Business Committee has been raising funds to provide youth athletic scholarships since nineteen ninety-eight, and recently hosted its first zip Long Poak event. Our Military Affairs Committee was created to encourage a supportive partnership between Vandenberg Air Force Base and the Long Poak Valley. This committee actively participates in Vandenberg events such as the quarterly and annual awards programs, and conducts fundraising activities to support the annual appreciation barbecue for the military personnel and their families. The Long Poak Valley Chamber supports the efforts of all of our troops, and in particular those stationed at Vandenberg Air Force Base. We are proud to have compiled a list on our website of over fifty local businesses that offer discounts for military personnel. Union Bank and its predecessor, Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, were responsible for an annual event, event called Trees for Troops. This event, which was part of a national program, donated Christmas trees and tree stands to the families of active-duty military in our area. The event was completely underwritten by the bank, but unfortunately, two years ago, the tree supplier for the program decided they could no longer participate, and the bank had to let the program go. Seeing the value and continued good relationships with our partners on Vandenberg Air Force Base, the chamber, along with a coalition of local businesses and the Long Poak Rotary Club, were able to take over responsibility for that event, continuing this tradition of thanking our military for their service in our country. Colonel Moss, commander of the Thirty-Fifth Space Wing, was quoted in the Long Poak record as saying, "You have no idea how much this means to our folks. It may not seem like a big deal, but not having to worry about getting a tree during the holidays is a huge thing." This program donated seventy trees to Vandenberg families this last year. Long Poak's Old Town Market, summer on H Street, is a street fair occurring on Friday nights, June thirtieth, through August eighteenth, from five to eight P.M., in the one hundred block of South H Street. This event has grown considerably, so by popular demand, and through a collaborative effort with the city of Long Poak, we were able to extend this event one hour. The Old Town Market features live entertainment, food, merchandise, and information booths, and activities for the entire family. A free bounce house and activities for kids are also included each Friday. There are eight different theme nights for this year. Youth Leadership Long Poak Valley is a program for high school students entering their junior year of high school, and designed to motivate and empower the students through team-building, issues-related seminars, community projects, and interaction with community leaders. This program is a collaboration with the Long Poak Valley Chamber of Commerce and the Long Poak Unified School District, which led to the program's formation in nineteen ninety-eight. The program is an investment in the future of the Long Poak Valley through the education and developing of our youth as community leaders. Sustainability from this program's from, comes from its community support. The Long Poak Community Development Foundation was created in nineteen ninety-nine as a subsidiary corporation of the Long Poak Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, to provide an opportunity to fund new programs and sustain existing programs such as Youth Leadership Long Poak Valley. Our ambassadors are essentially the hospitality arm of the chamber. They are friendly volunteers who donate their time to assist chamber staff at ribbon-cuttings, luncheons, after-hours, mixers, and special events. Our ambassadors are local professionals, business owners, community advocates, and volunteers for many local organizations. The chamber's inaugural dance, Long Poak Dancing With a Star, style fundraiser, that council member Osborne proudly danced in, raised over three thousand dollars for four different local charities, including the Long Poak Theater Project, Valley Haven Adult Day Center, Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Center, and Kappa Companion Animal Placement Assistance. In two thousand sixteen, one thousand four hundred and fifty-nine visitors came into the chamber. We mailed one thousand eighty-six visitors' packets and seventy-one relocation packages, fielded one thousand four hundred and thirty visitor calls, and distributed four thousand four hundred and forty pieces of visitors' material, distributed to local hotels, tasting rooms, and other sites. Longpoak.com, the chamber's website, received close to two million hits. The Long Poak Valley Chamber continued to provide marketing support for the Mural Society, Long Poak's Pops Orchestra, Long Poak Civic Theater, Long Poak Concert Association, Long Poak Music Association, Long Poak Valley Master Choral, Long Poak Valley Historical Society, Long Poak Museum, La Prisma Mission, Long Poak Hospital Foundation, City of Long Poak Parks, Long Poak Valley YMCA, Long Poak Boys and Girls Club, Piper Club Fly-ins, Long Poak Little League Tournaments, and the Vandenberg Area Recreation Program. In two thousand sixteen, we also conducted three small business seminars, free to membership, including Google Business, email marketing, and social media. Economic development is very important to the chamber's mission as well. Our website has a range of resources for small businesses, including a checklist of business support organizations, and resources that help both current business owners and entrepreneurs at any stage of development. The list of resources helps with information on how to start or grow a business, or relocate a business to Long Poak. There are helpful links like How to Get a Business Loan by Consumer Affairs, or the two thousand and seventeen Community and Economic Profile developed by the Chamber of Commerce. The chamber holds a seat on the City of Long Poak Economic Development Committee, and Economic Vitality Team for Santa Barbara County, and is currently working with a Small Business Development Center to have a larger presence and offer services in Long Poak. If chamber funding is eliminated, every program we support will be impacted, and the chamber will not exist as it does today. There is no other agency that provides the unique and diverse services that the Chamber of Commerce provides, and the elimination of chamber funding would certainly mean the elimination of these programs and services. Every attempt is being made to identify alternative revenue sources, but with little notice, the initial impact could be devastating. It is our best hope that the City of Long Poak finds value in the services the chamber provides to the Long Poak Valley, and we can continue our longstanding partnership. Understanding that being a business-freddy, business-friendly city is a top priority of city council, and necessary for the long-term socio-economic vitality of our community, I strongly advocate for the continued financial support of the Long Poak Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is James Carucci. I'm a, I serve on the Long Poak Museum Board of Trustees. Almost fifty years ago, a partnership was formed between the city, the family of Clarence Ruth, and the Long Poak Museum Associates. And, at that time, the museum was started, and documents were signed defining our role in the service to the city, in curating the, the, both the building and the Clarence Ruth collection of materials. Our annual budget is around a hundred thousand, a little less than a hundred thousand. We generate a little less than half of that on our own, with admission price, and grants, and donations that we can get by ourselves, but a little more than half of it comes from the city. And, and that gets back to the partnership that we have with you, in service to you for the, the Ruth family. We also are involved in the, the Unified School District curriculum, in different places, at different times, and there's a lot of other services that would be missed if your funding was not renewed. I view our partnership as non-severable. By that I mean that we would not be able to continue without your fifty to sixty percent funding. It's just not possible for us to generate the funds that we need, and, and continue to provide the services that we have been providing since nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen Not too many years ago, the City of Long Poak commissioned a number of studies related to the development of the Old Town area. The Veterans Building at one end of South H Street was identified as an anchor, and the Carnegie Building, which is now about a hundred and ten years old, was identified as another anchor, and the theater, the old theater, was considered a critical part of that development as well. We implore you, we beseech you, we, we strongly suggest that you, you continue to support us. We're the keepers of the history of Long Poak, and it's important, I think, for the cities, for citizens moving forward, to see where they came from. Again, funding is critical, the number of services we offer are, I think, important, and we're going to have another member of the, of the board speak, and she can mention some of the details. So, that's it, I guess. I, I, we understand you're in a hard place, and there's hard decisions to make, and I hate being compared to the need for a new fire engine, but we get it, sir. Good luck, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
My name is Alice Down, and I am the board of the museum as well. Some of the things the museum has done, we have had, we are open, basically representing the city six days a week, only closed on Mondays. In the last five years, we have had visitors from forty-six different states, from fifty, twenty-seven different countries. On the weekends, when the members of the board sit at the desk and welcome visitors, we are kind of the chamber where, where people can come to get public information. We have rack cards, and we can talk about the mural society, and the murals in town, and we can direct people to the mission, and they ask where they can, where to go to lunch, and what do you recommend for dinner, and what about wine tasting? And we tell them about the West Valley, and the flowers, and the, and the beach, and Vandenberg, and the history of town. People come in to look at, track their city history. The Historical Society of Long Poak does a good job, but the museum is the one that's open and on the job every day. In addition, we have an absolutely outstanding director at the museum, who I dare say, if she were to be a city employee, and you were paying full, full rate for her skills and talent of a PhD, couldn't do it. We bring added value to the downtown, we bring added value to the community, we have added, the museum board has bought the building next door, the former Christian Science Building, church building, and turned it into a community venue for nonprofits to use. Long Poak Civic Theater rehearses there on a regular basis, the Buddhist group meets there, the daughters of the American Revolution meet there. It's just a small venue that we make available at a reasonable price to other nonprofits. So, we bring added value to the downtown, we, I just don't think you can do without us, and I hope you can consider. As long as I've been on the board, the funding from the city has been about, I think, at some point, the number that comes to mind, that we were getting something like sixty-two thousand dollars in a grant from the city to help to keep the doors open. That was reduced to, in the neighborhood of fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we're not talking inflation. It has, from about nineteen ninety-five until now, not only have the dollars gone down in terms of inflation, they have gone down in absolute dollars as well. So, we're not asking a lot for the value you would get from the museum. I hope you consider it as a fairly cheap, but highly useful contribution to the city. Thank you for all you do. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
George Bedford, Long Poak resident. I realize you folks have a tough, tough deal with this budget, but a lot of it's also self-inflicted. Do we not set any side, money aside for accruals for equipment? That's, I'm just asking that question. In my business, I have a bunch of lifts that sometimes go bad, but we have an accrual account that covers when they need to be replaced. So, I'm kind of wondering why, all of a sudden, you're going to take eight hundred thousand dollars out of a budget for a fire engine, and then you probably, those trash trucks are what, another six hundred thousand each? But don't you accrue each month or each year for those replacements? Or is it all a surprise when it happens? That's just, just a comment. I think, moving forward, I, I think you ought to set up accounts for that. Fire trucks are only going to last so long, especially when you have to send them, when somebody's having a baby. Can't just send an ambulance or a pickup, you got to send, now we're sending a ladder truck to follow the ambulance, that, we're just in a society that's gone crazy. But accruals would help your budget each year. So, that's, that's my only comment, I think. We need, we need to run this city like a business, instead of a place where we just expect all the citizens within the city to just keep ponying up, year after year after year after year? And a fire truck going bad is, is, is all of a sudden, an emergency? Doesn't, doesn't, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Sorry for the time I took tonight. Love all of you, talk to you later.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, John Lynn, Long Poak resident again. So, I want to try to take the twenty-thousand-foot view here. There's three big decisions that you need to make before you go very far down the road. Number one, hopefully tonight, the five of you decide if you're going to support going to the voters for tax increases. Now, personally, I wouldn't support it, and I asked a lot of people around town who I consider to be pretty influential, and I didn't get a positive statement from any of them on any of the three. And the Hotel Association, I think they caught fire when they heard it, because they already agreed to a two percent increase some years ago, which was to fund the chamber, and now you want to take that funding away that we passed to fund the chamber? And I realize there's some discussion about that, but I was here when it happened, and I remember the deal, because I was involved with the chamber. Number two, you need to make a decision on whether you're going to defund some, all, a percentage of the nonprofits. But before you do that, you need to get a real list. I gave you a list that was my best educated guess, and I went through the city's expense documents to find that, and then two people promptly told me of two more I never even thought of, that I didn't find. So, you need to decide what it is you're going to do there. And then finally, you need to decide how you're going to balance a budget. So, in two thousand ten, the decision was made to balance the budget by reducing things that we could do without. And at the end of the day, it was, it was balanced by having furloughs go forward. I don't know if we're at that position again, but in the last budget, you added positions to the city. In this budget, there are new positions being added, and along the way, technology has improved. Are there some things that we no longer need because we have technology that helps us with that? As an example, once upon a time, we used to spend a lot of money going out for printing, and now we go back to the copy room and hit the color copier, and all that work is done in-house. Now, obviously, that savings is passed long ago, but what are the other savings that are out there? And then finally, you need to look at some of the things that we do, and decide if we truly need to do those things. Now, in the past, the staff brought to the council, when some of you were sitting there with me, a decision to contract out our building department, because we were losing money. And I think we're in that position again, so perhaps that's something you need to consider again. It was a big cost savings back then, it was a hundred thousand dollar savings. So, look back at what, what happened in two thousand nine and two thousand ten, and take some lessons from that. After you decide, A, are you going to support a tax increase? B, are you going to cut nonprofits? Or C, are you going to tighten the belt? Thank you. And we do have equipment reserve dollars.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak, mayor, councilman. I think it was about a year ago, I brought a document that was generated by the Obama administration towards the end of his term, his last term, and it was called Financially Challenged Cities. And I pointed out to you the fact that Long Poak had made the list, and identified some very distinct characters that qualified the city to make it on the list. Decreasing revenues, increasing pension costs, deferment of capital expenditures in infrastructure. It went off and explained that there was an agency that was available. I handed the list, it got passed down the line, ended up in the city administrator's hands, never was discussed. Over the last year, I've consistently heard that we were in solid, firm ground. So, the question I have today is, how did that happen? How did we get here? Where was the failure, or where was the oversight? Where was the miscalculation? And what did we do from that point to this point to have such a shortcoming? You need to go back and see, what did you do from that point? Because I looked at a recent document that you have posted, and it shows expenditures rising. So, now we have everybody speaking about needs. Well, I'm going to speak a little bit about a lot of the people that can't make it here tonight. Those are the people that have to decide whether to buy formula, pay the utilities, or buy the medicine. They're the people that have to decide what's going to go off first, their auto insurance, their utilities, or their medic- their utilities, or their medications. They're the seniors on fixed income. They're our agricultural workers who work in the fields and guess what? If they couldn't take some vegetables home from their job, they probably couldn't have enough food for the end of the week. There's, I don't envy any of you. I am not trying to minimize any other needs in our community, but you need to take into consideration the fact that we have a substantial amount of members in our community who have needs that are very basic and fundamental. And each and every time we make additional reaches into their pocket, we're not taking away a new car, we're not taking away a toy, we're not taking away a vacation, we're not taking away a quicker retirement, we're taking away their ability to eat, their ability to buy medication, their ability to buy clothes for their kids, or send their kids for an education. So take in consideration, everybody, when you make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. No, you don't want to vote.
I won't hit that button.
Councilwoman Mosby, yeah. Councilwoman Osborne.
Well, thank you. Being a new member, but having been in this community nearly seventeen years, having been an active participant in some of the economic decisions as part of a member of the Economic Development Committee, and now having been elected your voice to this, this is very, very difficult. But I want to remind the public that the budget issue is something being created by the state. It's the CalPERS and it's a seventy-one million dollar obligation that has been put upon us as of December twenty-first. Prior to that, the numbers were different they had provided us. We had managed what we believed was the proper way to do this. Unfortunately, there isn't a way currently unless you can provide it to me that we can buy our way out of the CalPERS system and design something that we have low control of. The unfortunate side of this is that we're having to look at drastic measures and we're having to reconsider things that none of us want to do. I don't want to pay new taxes on things like sales tax and my utilities. I don't want to ask visitors to pay an additional sales tax on their hotel room. But I need us to consider as a community what we do to move forward and cover costs that we are obligated to no matter what, no matter how many services we cut currently, no matter, no matter how many people we lay off. This dollar amount is our obligation no matter what. So we could stop providing all services, contract out everything, pay somebody else to do it, it's still an expense to us to pay those, but we still, as a city, would have to remain organized, if nothing else, to pay for that PERS amount. And that is what recently changed. So really, really hard. I hadn't intended to have any of this discussion tonight because I really wanted this discussion to move forward in a proper arena where we notified people and they didn't feel like it was shoved at the end of a meeting because this is way too important. And yes, it's going to be an education. We need to talk about why we need to consider tough decisions. And yes, no matter what, it's going to impact the lowest income members of our community. But if we don't, all the other decisions, just in the next two years, are going to affect them because we aren't going to be able to provide the services that we as a city are mandated to do. So again, I just want to remind the community and all of those out there who are upset about what we're suggesting or considering, that ultimately, it's something beyond our control and we're trying to do the most aggressive way to deal with it because prior councils didn't take the option to do something really, really aggressive, even on a different number. So I don't want to make these decisions. I want to run screaming from being elected here because this is really, really hard. But I'm willing to have the hard discussion, so I want to talk about it. I don't want to dismiss these tax proposals because it is an option and we need to seriously consider them. And we need to educate ourselves on why they're a possibility and what that good would do, even if it's a hardship on us. It would be a hardship on all of us, not just on a portion of the community or one nonprofit or one household. So I'll close with that and thank you for scheduling the other meetings and I think there'll be important discussions to be had.
Okay, anyone else? Councilwoman Mosby.
Yeah, I'd like to request that we have numbers come back. You guys can operate on this book as though the taxes went through, but I'd like to see the numbers come back without estimating or anticipating the three new taxes and have those available for our next meeting and next discussion.
City attorney, do we need a second or third on that or just?
I'm, if the council as a consensus wants to have that information, then the council can get that information. I think the city manager may have that information, but I...
Yeah, we have that information now.
Okay, so, anyone else? Okay, just one quick question and we'll move on to item number six. At some point, we have to make a decision whether we want to support putting those tax measures on the two thousand eighteen, is it two thousand eighteen?
November two thousand eighteen.
November two thousand eighteen. At what point, there's a lot of work that, if we decide to support moving forward that, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. At what point do you need that decision made? Do you need it made tonight? Do you need it made?
Anytime through this budget process because we have hypothetically till about mid-August of two thousand eighteen. So your more immediate deadline, July of two thousand eighteen. Your more immediate deadline is the June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen deadline where you need to adopt a balanced budget, which will either assume those in, assume those out, or some other hybrid in, in one way or the other.
Okay, so that decision we don't have to make tonight. Any other comments from the council? Okay, thank you. Now written communications.
Still nothing.
Still none, okay. Moving back to item number six now. Okay, Councilwoman Mosby, Councilwoman Mosby, you asked for this to be pulled. Oh, Councilwoman Starbuck, okay. Ms. Wall, do you want to do a quick staff presentation or?
If you want.
Did you want a staff presentation or?
I can wait.
Yeah, I don't think we really need a presentation. We've been, you know, yeah.
Okay, so go ahead.
Well, obviously, I'm shifting gears rapidly here. The Utility Commission and some of the thoughts that they had, I really think are a good, great thing. I'm not going to go into a bunch of grave detail right here, but I'm going to just say that, I think that, I know that wastewater, we have to do something. On the other hand, we have electric, which is doing fairly well, probably one of our most strong, if I get an affirmative, electric is our strongest enterprise fund right now and very much on track, I feel, for reserves and everything else. What I'd really like to do is put this item away for a meeting or two and have a little analysis done that would state, okay, we can, we need to have this increase in wastewater. But on the other hand, I think that this hand would like to see possibly a reduction in electric. So that the bill would be the same, we can meet wastewater's bonds, the debt there, and we would just slow down the amount of reserves going into electric. I cannot quote a percentage, I may be way off base, but shifting from one pocket to the other in the enterprises, where the bottom line is, is the citizen that's out there would pay the same bill, the same amount, but the money would go into the wastewater fund where we need it. I feel that water, looking at some of the numbers, is not flush but self-sustaining right now. Electric appears to be strong. We did a three percent reduction before. If we could do something to balance the scales, is this a possible thing that, you know, am I way out of line here or, you know?
Okay, Councilwoman Mosby, you have your light on, but I'd like to quick comment on that before I get your comments because you asked, is it possible? Obviously, it's possible, but I just want to remind us that even though we're good with our electric fund right now, in the year two thousand twenty, we are being, every city in California is being mandated to be at thirty percent renewable power, carbon-free power. That's wind power, solar power, hydroelectric, some, some hydro, not, not all hydro, we can only use small hydro, our geysers. Now, we're fortunate that we are members of Northern California Power and we're getting a good portion of that green, I'll call it green, but it's renewable power through them. We're members, we purchase it. We're right at the thirty percent, so we're good on the year two thousand twenty. But the fund we have to be concerned with there, in two thousand twenty-six, just around the corner, the state is going to be requiring us to be at fifty percent renewable. Now, what does that mean? Renewable power, we all like to say that we love using green, it keeps the air fresh and everything. Renewable power is more expensive than your conventional carbon oil or energy. Electricity coming from a solar panel, more expensive than if you pump it through natural gas. Wind power, very expensive. Hydroelectric, we can only use small hydro. What that means is our big hydroelectric plants up in Northern California, that we generate literally, I don't know how many, a hundred kilowatts of carbon-free power. The state will not allow us to utilize that as renewable power. I can tell you why it's, well, yeah, it's because we've diverted some water for fish and it's, it's altering the ecology up in Northern California so that we cannot use our large power, we can only use the smaller hydroplants. Thing that we have, really have to look at is there is a bill in the California State Senate right now that would like to require us to be at one hundred percent renewable by a dirt, a date not yet determined. So yes, we're good in electric rate, in electric fund right now, but power is going to be starting to be more and more expensive to our city and every other city, starting in the year two thousand twenty, and then every year after that, it's going to be increasing more and more expensive until we get to fifty percent by the year two thousand twenty-six. So I don't want us to be looked at by some council in the future saying, if only the council had not taken money away from electric fund, we would not be having to make these drastic increases to this, to the public in our, in our electric utility rates. We've got a fund right now there that is stable. So if we start taking money away from that, we're going to start paying for it dearly by the year two thousand twenty-one. So that's my only concern. Councilwoman Mosby.
Yeah, to get back on track with water rates, wastewater rates and solid waste rates and the, I know it's tough. I haven't had one person say, I can do this. And in, in looking at the calculations and doing what we did last time, and I don't know if Melinda had some true-up numbers on table six, did you get any better numbers? I went to her several times in the last couple of days to see if what it says on table number six, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read table number six?
I didn't realize you were going to speak on this. I would like to speak a little bit on this.
Okay.
Yeah. If you're yielding the floor, we would like, I'd like to make a statement and then Ms. Wall would like to address you.
Go ahead.
Are you yielding?
Yeah, yeah, most definitely.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear because there's some statements about the work and recommendations of the Utility Commission and I don't want to get lost in the fact, the staff's done some considerable work and has recommendations that are different in some cases than the Utility Commission's. So whether we do a presentation tonight or presentation a couple of meetings from now, I just ask that you give us the opportunity to make our presentation prior to making your decisions. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wall.
I did, I'm sorry, I did update the sheets here and I did want to have a chance to pass those out. Okay, now I've lost them in minutia, sorry. So these are, the sheets that are passing out are just an update on the tables that I had. I also did want to hand out the capital outlay schedule that I handed out to the Utility Commission last night that wasn't handed out to you. It's a summary of all the capital projects that are, have been asked for and the importance of, of looking at this. Sorry, do you need another one? Extra ones? Can I, should I give my presentation or? Oh, no, I don't. The information that I just passed out is the summary of the capital outlay and a capital improvement project that you, that have, has been posted on the website. The interesting thing to note is if you look at the schedule, that the majority of the capital projects that are in that schedule are from the enterprise funds. They're from solid waste, wastewater, water, and electric. All, all those items that we have are based on our, the revenues that we have projected, all the projected revenues we have are based on rate increases. Whether or not everybody's in agreement of how the expenditures are divvied out or what, some of the things that are important to note is that our bond indentures require that we meet several requirements and several of you have been through this for forty years now, now in the fifth year, of how we meet our bond covenants and how our bond, bondholders look at us. What we're trying to do right now this year is refinance our ninety-eight or two thousand five or two thousand seven bonds for water and wastewater and to get a better rate. And if our bondholders see that we are not living up to our covenants by not allowing the rates to affect, then they may not be interested in our bonds and we may not get the good, the good interest rate that we would need to get to make it beneficial for us to do that. We also have the State Revolving Fund, the board that are, that's looking at if we're solvent, what we're doing. If we don't have the cojones to go up there and do what's necessary for those rates, they're going to look at us and realize that we're not serious about providing adequate coverage for bonds and average, the things we need to do for capital improvements and to keep our system clean and running. I know you've seen my slideshow presentation for four years now where we're meeting our bond covenants. We're finally getting some net income for our wastewater. Unfortunately, some of the reason why we're getting a good net income finally in wastewater is we're not doing our capital projects and we're postponing two million dollars worth of pipes that need to be replaced. There can be things that will put some money aside by taking it from another capital project. However, those capital projects still need to be done. And if you push them down the road, you're going to be treating the future generation the way that the past generation has treated you and not, and not giving you the city enough money to get those capital projects. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. Anyway, I just wanted to put that point out there. I know you have a serious consideration before you, but I also need to say that it's the city's responsibility... before you, but I also need to say that it's the city's responsibility to provide for the things to keep the city safe. And that means water and wastewater and solid waste. And I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the council before a good public comment?
Make a comment to her.
Go ahead.
You know, again, it seems like we're repeating the same thing that happened the last budget cycle. I'd like to address, you know, Councilman Mosby and Councilman Starbuck, we sound like we're repetitive, doing the same thing over again. And I'd like to know what the outcome of this and how we expect to move forward. Again, we always were promised, hey, what was the reason for these rate increases the last time? Again, she just explained that it was for either infrastructure or building our reserves. What did we get out of it last time, okay? We're talking about, hey, negotiating about a certain percentage, a 3% or a 4% or a 5%. What did we get? What do we expect out of this? Or is it just feeding the general fund again just to survive? Again, I think you guys had mentioned you guys were putting an ad hoc committee together for enterprise reimbursement, and I don't think that ever came back. We're making decisions and we're putting the cart in front of the horse again, okay? We never did get any feedback from that. And I know you guys are working hard at it, so I'm not just saying. What I'm doing is asking a question from you guys if that is very important to our decision-making process here with the budget. I'm an advocate for the people, the people that voted for me, and I want to make sure that we run the city as a business. But I want to make sure we're not just repeating ourselves just so we can hear ourselves and we come out with the same outcome. And in the next budget cycle, all we're doing is sitting here doing it again. We have rate increases, we're not getting anything out of it. I understand it's for the future generations, but that's not good planning looking forward. We're trusting someone else to make us promises. And we should be able to get some sort of guarantees when we vote for things in here, just like the master fee schedule. We vote in these fees and then we get surprised that the inspections are implemented. And all of a sudden, they're showing up, now we've got to give a presentation so we can sell ourselves to the people of why it's okay. So anyway, I just think that we just really need to vet this a little closer. Instead of saying, hey, we're in a negotiating mode, 1%, 2%, 3%, why would we do that without knowing what the outcome is? What is 3% going to do for us versus 7% or 15%?
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open this up to the public.
John Lynn, I'm Utility Commission Vice Chair, but I'm just going to speak on, for myself, the chairman did a great job of discussing what we felt after, I don't know, three and a half hours of discussion the other night and some before that. First, just to correct a couple of the mayor's comments, actually, purchased power is dropping in cost. Our average cost now for both green energy, if you will, and regular energy is down around four cents. Transmission has come up, we're up to about 1.2 cents now. In 2015, our purchased power cost was $12 million. In 2016, it dropped to 10.5, so a $1.5 million drop. I would share with you one really important thing from the proposition, which is today's rate payers pay for today's system. They don't pay for what might happen nine years from now. So there's a question about how much reserve is enough. In 2012, when at least two of you were sitting here with me, we made a decision to lower electric rates 3% and we had $6.2 million in reserve. And the staff said, well, that's okay, but we need a little more, okay? As of today, we have 14 point, well, slightly more than $14 million in reserve. And we have $1.1 million in a special reserve for carbon credits to purchase renewables. So if $6 million was about enough, then $8 million is probably enough. And $14 million is more than enough. And then going forward, there'll be more income over the next couple of years. So to say we can't cut a rate now because something might happen nine years from now isn't legal in the first place. And I think the fact that we have much more reserve than we ever dreamed we needed would allow us to make that decision. I spent five days going through city records trying to truly understand our fiscal position on the four utilities that I'm responsible for. And I came away from that, I'm going to summarize in my last 47 seconds. I think the water utility is in a position where a rate increase is not justified at this point in time. Clearly, I think the electric utility is in a position where it can take a rate reduction. Given the infrastructure issues that we have, both within the plant and within the lines, I'm sorry, we need another rate increase in sewer, and we did vote unanimously to do that. And although I think we could probably pass up on it, a 3.5% increase in solid waste is probably what needs to happen every year going forward so that we don't go backwards, even though their reserve is growing now. And their large project coming up would be a capitalized project, so it wouldn't be a direct hit to them. Thank you.
Bob Holloway, I'm on the Utility Commission. With the water, you can't tell me where the money's going for the water. If you want to raise the rates on the water, then all that money should stay in the water department. Because we have a lot of stuff that needs to be fixed, the infrastructure's going to hell, and we need to get it fixed. And it's going to be kicking in the road. I've been on there since 2001, and we've been kicking the can down the road for 16 years. And I've been saying the same thing over and over and over and over. And I keep coming up here and saying it, and we aren't getting anything done. We keep raising the rates, but we're not getting anything done. And it's like Mr. Vega said, you know, where's the money going? You know, I mean, we raised the rates to fix the infrastructure, and we say we want to fix the infrastructure, and they said, well, we don't have any money. So I don't get it, you know? I mean, Melinda says we got the money, but when we get a job ready to go, then they don't have any money. So I, you know, it's a tough situation. But, you know, we have to run this place like a business, because this is what this is. The City of Lompoc is a corporation, and everybody that has a utility bill is part owner of the city. And, you know, they're all stockholders in the city. So they're going to have to get together and start putting some pressure on somebody somewhere to get, you know, so we know where all the money's going. Because right now, you know, I look at the budget and everything, and I can't see, I know that we pay a lot to the general fund, all the utilities do. But when we have a rate increase from now on, it should go directly to the sewer, the water, the wastewater. And it should be stayed, that's where it should stay, so that we can get our infrastructure fixed up. We have two pipes going underneath the railroad tracks between D and E and E and F, and they're like this. You can't run the camera through them or anything. And we've been trying to get them fixed for five years, and we haven't got them fixed yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So once again, I'm just going to reiterate and expound what I spoke about previously, about the less fortunate in our community. Typical person, say they make $12 an hour, that equates about $24,000 a year. That's a pretty good-paying job in Lompoc. But an average utility bill is probably 250, which is $3,000. It's over 10% of their income. So I petition you, and this is the same question I asked before, I understand it's a business and I understand that we have fixed costs, but I also understand that, as Mr. Holloway just mentioned, that monies are taken from the general fund to support general fund expenses. When is enough enough? That was my question before, over a year ago. When do we reach the limit? Do we wait till our biggest expense of the household is no longer our mortgage, it's our utilities? The utilities are more than your HOA, your utilities are more than your property taxes? The problem isn't that we need more money, the problem is how we spend the money. I think you need to roll up your sleeves and really look deeply into how you're spending money and get back to the basics. Because you're going to break the people. It's just a matter of time. So take them into consideration when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, closed public comment, bring it back to council. Councilman Mosby.
If I can get back to table six. If you look at table six, you would see that this is the wastewater increase of 2015, 2016, 2017 projected. And last year, we had a 10.5% increase, but the revenues projected are down $550,000 with a 10.5% increase. So as much, do you have?
I need to interject just a little bit at this point. Because we are, we have a partnership with the Vandenberg Village and the Air Force Base. If we don't do any capital improvements, they don't owe us anything, our revenues are going to be less. So it's unfair to look at that amount based on the fact that I projected that with the idea that there wasn't going to be any donations or contributions from the village for our capital improvements. And they do pay a good percentage of that. So you can't look at that number exactly dollars per dollars because they're apples and oranges. You've got the village participating and paying for us and the Air Force Base. And I just wanted to point that out that...
Right, it had some capital and capital projects that didn't happen, so those numbers didn't come in as revenues.
For lower.
Right.
Yeah.
But do you have numbers that came in that you could share with us directly for what we did for our customers that we charged for this?
No, I didn't.
Because from what I understand, people can, the average went down, right?
It did go down.
So the amount of wastewater, the six-year average number went down. We raised the rates...
By one unit, the average went down by one unit.
Right. And so that's significantly changed. And it's, what I was going to go into explanation is when you get to that certain point, people are in the panic mode and they're start stopping using our services.
And a lot had to do with conservation also.
Right.
Because of the drought.
Right. We had a degree of the conservation aspect, and likewise with water. We saw the same thing happen in the water. Enterprise rate went up on the unit charge, and last year, I believe, when we had the seven and a half, or the year before last, we had a 7.5% increase that was on the unit charge. And we saw only, it was on the unit and the meter charge, but we saw a 3% increase approximately in revenues.
Yes.
With water. And that's why we made the decision to not do it on the unit charge, we did it on just the meter charge. And we got everything we asked for, right? Because the meter was, the meter charge.
And I don't know how individual people think and how much they use, but yes.
What I'm finding out is that people are at that level of church conservation, but there is a level of people feeling that, you know, I'm using too much and it's costing me too much. And I see that, and we have the number going down, like you say, one unit as an average, right?
People are getting smarter about figuring out the six-year average. People first move here, they don't really, they may hear about it, but they don't think about it. So they, the first year, they, like six years ago, they just got charged a flat average rate and didn't realize it was going to impact them for six years down the road. And they don't really realize it until all of a sudden their bill goes up because they hadn't been paying attention to those winter averaging months. And so our consumers have gotten smarter about how they use water during those months.
Right. But we are, what we are seeing, the final result, is that average number is coming down.
Yes.
Okay, and that's from seven, from eight to seven?
Yes, for a home, and then from seven to six for apartments.
And we're getting a lot of people into the minimum use category too, right?
Which is five units, yes.
Right. So, and that number's increased significantly, hasn't it?
I couldn't give you the numbers right now, but yes.
What I was getting at is when you get to that point, when your rate gets so high, you end up doing the opposite of what you want to do. And that seems to be what's happening here. Granted, we didn't have a capital number in year. And coming in from outside areas because we didn't do a capital project for the wastewater. But I believe right now, we are currently at that threshold when we're, that if we raise the rate again, we're going to make people conserve that much more, and we're going to be chasing our tail. We are not going to get, you raise the rate, you're not going to get the money you want, you're going to get less.
And people can only conserve so much, and they're go back to using their normal amount, they get used to the rates.
Maybe our methodology of the charge, and I'd made this suggestion when I was a Utility Commissioner, that the rate should go on as they did up at Vandenberg Village. They had just that portion of the bond. They knew they had to pay this bond debt, so they put a solid, hard number out there, and they didn't put something that was a variable because we knew we had to cover. And we have here right now is we're trying to chase that number to make the debt payments.
Yeah, and the average bond debt per residence is about $40. So that's a fixed cost that needs to be paid. 42% of our budget for wastewater is the debt service.
Right. So, I mean, and it's, granted hindsight and such, another mechanism, but we're in a position now, in the way I see here, is we raise the rate again, we're not going to necessarily increase revenues.
Yeah, and part of the budget for 2017, 19, we're asking to go back and look at each of the four utilities and see if there's a better way to do it. So there isn't such a fluctuation in the meters. Because when we set the rates in 2013, the water rate, as you know, was the, the fixed rate was only a third, and the variable rates, two-thirds. So people can, they're not comfortable using as much water because it impacts them more. If you have a fixed rate that covers 22/3 of it versus a third of it, then you get an equal type of usage in the households.
Right. Well, you're not supposed to force conservation, but conservation was the result of raising the cost of the volume of water.
Yes.
Right. And that's, that's kind of what I'm seeing here along with this, is we're at that, that top mark in the graph that it doesn't seem to be getting, we're not gaining. And granted, okay, as you qualified this, that we didn't have more capital projects coming in from our partners. But likewise, we did get $550,000 less. And maybe, maybe we should come back with this, so you could bring us more of a hard number to show us the true revenue of the people of Lompoc. Did we, we went, asked for 10.5, what did we get on wastewater? We don't really know that number.
I don't. Not at this point.
And if I, if I may, we probably won't know that number until audit financials for '17 are published in December. So waiting until December to decide to do this may be too late.
Maybe too late for what?
Well, for one thing, the rates setting is not just what you're deciding tonight. The six-year averaging, that is the calculation for every single customer that has either a water meter or is a flat-rate apartment dweller where the landlord does not pay the sewer. That calculation is done, it should have started about last month. And for, what we try to do is to have that coincide with whatever kind of rate adjustments we're doing so people don't see two different changes. But the six-year averaging is something we calculate right around now. So if somebody has a change because they have a higher drop off or a lower drop off, their rates will change regardless of what the... their rates will change regardless of what the charge per unit rate is. So we've tried not to do that separate, but if we delay the, the resolution of the rate charge, people may see two different changes in their utility charge for wastewater this year and it would be, to me, I would think it would be confusing. Why did it change here and then a month later it changed to something else?
Well, I just, it's, it's very confusing here to see that we raised the rate last year and we're not able to see if it worked or it didn't work. And the number that I'm seeing here is not showing that it worked.
I don't think worked and not worked are the right way to look at it because rate increases, as Patrick had said before, do not equate to revenue increases. If you have a ten and a half percent rate increase, I can almost guarantee you won't have a ten and a half percent revenue increase because people's behaviors change based on that change. What we're looking for is what you're mentioning about people reducing their, their usage. If, if, if it's true that everybody's gotten down to the minimum, then there will be an increase in revenues because that minimum will be based on a higher per unit cost rather than the current per unit cost. And if not everybody's at the minimum, then we will see an increase because of that.
I don't think our objective is to force everybody to the minimum.
Well, if you recall, one of the things I suggested when we were doing this back in 2013 was to make, to gradually make the minimum equal to the average. So if the average was seven, then the minimum would be seven and everybody would be treated the same. If, if somebody gets down to the average, they don't have to work harder to get down to the minimum. So they have a little bit more flexibility and it gets to your point about being more of a flat rate for a vast majority of the people.
Right, so, again, we're, we're raising the rate and granted, maybe, you know, and we're raising the rate to gain revenue. Right? I mean, like you say, we go ten and a half, we're not necessarily gonna get ten and a half, but...
Right, but people change their behaviors. Some people will go out and change their solid waste can from a 96 to 64, so their bill would, their total bill that they see coming in will be not at, it offsets. So we've seen that happen. People see the increase in one utility and they, they look to another one to minimize that.
Yeah. So you wouldn't be able to give me the, the revenues of what we're gaining just in the city on?
We bill based on the routes, so for us to know what that is, we don't even know what we accrued for through June 30th until the middle of August. Because the middle of August is when the last routes that have usage in this fiscal year are billed. So you're asking us to project something that's going out May, June, July, and half of August. You're asking us to project 25% of the year. And we can do that, but it's gonna be just a projection.
That makes it very difficult for me to make a decision on if what we're doing is accomplishing what we're wanting to do. You can't give me hard numbers to decide this, it is...
Well, the, the other side of it is, you decide not to do it and you can guarantee you don't get any increase in revenues.
No, not necessarily. If we don't, maybe people will use more.
But with the six-year average, they're using more, won't affect the wastewater charges until 2018.
Well, right, but you still potentially could get more.
Because the six years have, have already been calculated through March or April of this year.
I do want to keep beating this on round, but the numbers that I have here, and what I see here, I'm not capable and able to make a, a, a suggestion to make a rate increase on wastewater. I'm not, the numbers that I see here on water, I see we're getting decent revenues in here, maybe it's not quite enough, but what's going on in there, I'd like to hold off on the water one. Solid waste, I can see the numbers in solid waste and understand what's coming down the line with solid waste and having to pay for the gas collection system. I could, I could make that recommendation to move forward with solid waste. But with water and wastewater, I think water, you do have revenues. With what I see here going on in wastewater, I don't think there's enough data here for me to put together, and it doesn't sound like you're able to get enough data, but what I do see here, and granted, as you, you filled in and I appreciate you giving me that, but what I do see here, that your actual number you brought in in 2016 was 14.9, you projected for 2017 is a half million, less than that. Granted, you have a capital project that didn't come in there, but we did raise the rates and we're not seeing the return. So that I, I see that people are doing complete conservation, as you've told me already, and Brad has as well, people have conserved down from, down one unit on average, which is significant.
Over a six-year period of time.
Right, and that, that's a significant movement.
Hard to do another one unit decrease.
Right, anyhow, let's, let somebody else, maybe they have some questions, but I, that's the recommendation that I've got.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Of course.
I don't buy your argument because the water went up and the wastewater rate is based on the water use. So how did the water make more money without raising rates? But you're telling us that the wastewater lost 500,000. That makes no sense at all, Jim.
Because Larry, what we did is we put it on the, we put it on the meter charge and not on the unit charge on water.
Will you read the page before? At the top of the page before the chart, Melinda tells us that we had a 7.7% increase in wastewater revenues in the first seven months of the fiscal year. So you can argue that you don't want to raise wastewater rates, that's fine, but don't use this argument that it didn't increase revenues, because it did.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wayne Miller.
If I may, first of all, I want to apologize for staff's outburst. Secondly, I do point out that if I heard right, the utility commission recommended the full increase as was already passed by the rate payers of the 218 process. It's already been approved by, by the rate payers. The utility commission passed and passed unanimously, staff recommendation. And I did want to point out that the interpretation that was going on, there is an interpretation that I believe you're attempting to make on table six, which table six wasn't designed for, and we can go back and try to extrapolate what, what you are trying to, trying to analyze there. All that having been said, I agree, I think in the long run, there needs to be a change in how we, how we set these things up. I'm not comfortable with the, with the whole averaging approach myself and I, and I, I agree that when you have a utility with as much of a component as a fixed cost, which is mainly what Mr. Mosby's pointing out, when you have that much of a component of fixed cost, you should probably have a rate construction that mirrors that kind of, of cost profile. And I, while, while we're not set to do that today, I think in, in our coming rate examinations as we look at that going forward, that's definitely the, the path he's going to go. So I will agree that that's gonna be ultimately the, the appropriate approach, is to try to have fixed rates that reflect fixed costs and variable rates that reflect variable costs. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how we get there, but I know that's where we eventually need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on that a little bit. Melinda had mentioned earlier in the process that staff in finance is currently working on doing a refinancing of our 1998, 2005, and 2007 bond issues, which would affect both water and wastewater. The market since November has gotten worse for municipal bonds, but it's still a market that would benefit the city's utilities if we were to go out to borrow money today. That's assuming that we would be able to get a good rating with the rating agencies. A action to not approve the rates would probably put in, would, I'm not sure, probably is not the right word. It would be a black mark against us when the rating agencies look at our bonds to see if they should be A, A minus, B, A plus. And those ratings directly affect the interest rates that we can receive, and those interest rates could create a significant amount of savings for the utilities beyond the dollar amounts we're talking about for a one-year increase in the rates. So it would reduce our costs, not just in this fiscal cycle, but through the end of the term of the bonds. So we're actively working on trying to get that to the point where we can bring it to you. I wouldn't want to have that, the possibility of having the bonds be in the money or out of the money because of a decision to reduce or not enact the rates that had been approved in 2013. And I guess the other thing I could say is, if we do get a favorable rating and a favorable interest rate on those bonds, we could then come back during the year to say, we, we have this permanent savings that we have that we can reevaluate based on the 1719 review and to provide that relief to the rate payers.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Councilman Mosby. I, that's exactly what my point was earlier, okay? As we look at the individual utilities and the increases that they're asking for, again, they, they clarified that we're looking at increasing revenues, okay? You think you're helping a single source and that's why I cautioned us in our decision-making process, that we're gonna end up in the same spot two years from now, you know? Because we have no control over how those funds are used. Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne.
So I all apologize to not being as familiar with this as my counterparts on council, but in reviewing the goals for this five-year rate adoption, it wasn't just about revenue, it was about compliance with contractual debt, which we've happily met very early on. Then it was an elimination of annual net operating losses, and we're getting close to that or have met that on a couple of these. Then it's to replenish the operating reserves for the 90 days. One of these we've met, one of them we're really close, one we're desperately far behind. And then it's finally that one big one that I hear consistently, not just from the utility commissioners, but for longtime residents who are aware of what neighborhood they live in, that we need to establish funding opportunities for necessary capital replacement projects by the end of five years for water, 10 years for wastewater, and a multitude of different things that are going on with solid waste. And what I understand staff to try and be doing with what we are confusing as, where's the money going, or there seems to be a whole lot of money there and there's this excess revenue and who's going and where is it being hidden, is actually being put aside to potentially provide these funding opportunities or counterpart to requesting funding, saying we are in a healthy place, so lending to us or issuing these bonds is worthy of our management of it. And so I fear not moving forward with at least a moderate rate on the water and continuing with the final year in each of these will set us back of not meeting that final goal or getting close enough to it. Yes, we need to reevaluate how we're doing the rates and modernize that. We need to make it more equitable and not such a burden on our community. But ultimately, we really need to get to the point where we're not burdened with the inability to use or pay for infrastructure. And that's my biggest concern, is let's finish this five-rate, five-year rate adjustment, let's go through the adjustments that we need to, not only on how rates are applied and how they're assessed, and do a new assessment on what rates and how they really should be so that we're not a third to two-thirds upside down, the wrong direction. But we need to finish this rate change chart for the five years we agreed to. At some level, I appreciate the utility commission recommending a unanimous on the wastewater and the solid. I understand them opposing and not being able to come forward with a, a water rate, but I think we need to come up with one. It may not be huge, but it should be there and keep us moving forward so that we at least potentially still are competitive for that refinancing of the current bonds that we have. That's where I stand.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the whole rate study was based on, on objectives back when, that was a statement made in there. The take, take, take part is what's just, we're feeding the pig, it seems like, but we have the ability to balance these bills, but nobody wants to discuss it, so I'm, I'm a little peeved with it right now.
Okay. I'd like to call a question. Does anyone want to make a motion? I'll make the motion. Based on staff presentations, based on the utility commission's recommendation, and based on prior council's approval of these rates, unfortunately, I'd like to move staff recommendation on this item. I'll need a second on that. Okay, without a second, that will fail, and I'd like to ask someone else to make a motion. So, okay, Jim?
It might set them off time a little bit, but I'd like staff to come back with some extra information on wastewater, so I could come up with a decision on that, but postpone this, suspend it, whatever verbiage you want to use on the wastewater analysis. The water analysis, I'd like to hold off on, on water as well, maybe bite another year, bring it back in a year to see where we stand and see if the conservation number has changed and people are feeling free to put green grass in again and we get, we retract the conservation measures. If we can get people to using more water again, yes, you can use more water again. Everybody please, maybe get some better showerheads out there or something. But I would make the movement to move forward with the solid waste number. So that's, hold off for a year on freshwater, come back with more information. I believe there's enough questions that I've put out there for the wastewater number. And I understand there's a huge infrastructure that we need with wastewater, but if we're gonna raise the rate and we're not getting what we want to get, maybe we need to sit back and do it a better way to get that. So I'm not ready to make a movement on that, so just move forward with the solid waste. So that's, that would be my motion.
And I'll need a second.
Solid waste is 3.6% on the solid waste, which works out to 80 cents? A dollar eight on average per customer, per month. A dollar eight for solid waste, but wait to come back for this, the wastewater, do they bring up more information? And hold off for another year and bring back water another year from now.
Okay, without a second, that will fail.
I'll give him a second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
I support the 3.6. I understand wanting a little more information on wastewater to make a better decision soon. I dislike waiting on water for an entire year. I, I think the information is there. I think we could, if you, if you weren't comfortable with, with even doing a 7.5, doing something slightly lower, I think not moving forward and continuing and finishing out this five-rate adjustment is a bad idea, especially if the market for refinancing is, is getting competitive and it'll actually ding us. I don't want to lose that potential financial aspect because we didn't finish our commitment and that's seen as an inability to get refinanced.
Right now, water is bringing in there. I think we could get a 10% just with people retracting off the conservation measures. I think we could see the number increase come on that. I'd like to see that number before I make a decision. And once we get, we're coming off of a five-year drought, I think we need to see what level that bounces to before we make a decision on freshwater, so I'm not willing to change my motion.
You are or not?
I am not.
Okay. Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay, let's, good, Councilmember Vega first.
Councilman Mosby, could you just clarify again? You're not asking for an increase in the water rate or the wastewater rate, but you are asking for us to move forward with a 3.5% for solid waste, is that correct? with a 3.5% for solid waste, is that correct?
Just the 3.6 on solid waste, they're going to come back with more information on wastewater?
You know, I, on a double take here, you know, I just have to question, you know, what were our guarantees were on, on the usage of that, those funds also, you know, as bolstering the reserves, and what your mentality is in thinking about this, and what your guarantees that you think are, because, you know, I have to make sure, this is a very important decision here.
Yeah, the only, the only increase that my motion had was the increase on solid waste. The other thing was to gather more information to bring back for wastewater, and to bring back, hold off water until next year, to come back again this next time next year for discussion again. So there would only be one financial increase with this motion, which was the 3.6% on solid waste.
You know, I'm going to retract my motion on any increases at all. On my second.
Okay, so we have a motion with no second. Do we have any second on that? Okay, so that motion fails. Does anyone else want to make a motion? Okay, so the item dies. Mr. Wilkie, you had a comment?
Not anymore, it was about what the extra information was going to be, but without the motion, there's not going to be any information.
Okay, we've got some discussion over there, yeah.
Well, we're having a legal discussion, because I believe what's happened is, we had a 218 process, the, the rates have been approved and are pending to, to be put into place. Absent, absent any action on council's part, the 218 process will prevail.
Okay.
Does anybody want to make a motion now?
I already made my motion and would have taken care of that.
Well, I'm asking everybody else, does everybody understand what happens? You don't back any motion or put any other motion, everything that's on here is what is up happening. By not doing anything, you will actually have done everything.
So does that, are they going to implement these rate increases anyway on the other two, that we don't make a decision?
All of them will be implemented if there's, nobody makes a motion that we go with. So by not doing anything, you actually have done everything. So...
Okay, well, you want to re...
Other than the makeup increase, wouldn't happen.
Okay.
So I'll put my motion back out there again.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
For clarity, what would happen is that under wastewater, the 15% increase that was part of the 218 would go through, but not the makeup from the prior. For the wastewater, the 10.5 would go through, and for solid waste, the 3.6 would go through.
And 15 for water.
And 15 for water, right.
Correct.
So I'd put my motion back out there again, if you wanted to second it again.
Okay, let's do it this way, okay? I feel like we're dealing with a state here, okay? I'm going to give you a second for that one, okay? Thank you.
So who's giving you a second, second?
A second, second.
Second try again.
Give you back the second I retracted, okay? On your motion that says, okay, 3.6% increase for solid waste, but no increases on the other utilities. I'm just kind of repeating, is that correct, what your motion was, sir?
Yes.
So I put back my question, what, is there a little bit more information I can, we can get for finance, of what that extra information is that you're looking for?
I'm looking to see the revenue calculations for the ratepayers of Lompoc, what we've gone through, to see what we did for 15, 16, and a projected 17, to see what, what our 10 and a half percent did.
Okay.
Without capital and...
Without pullout.
For wastewater. Only wastewater, and that was to hold, bring back the, the water next year.
Yeah, and part and parcels, we're going to pull, pull out the Vandenberg analysis, so we have apples to apples for you.
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
I have one question here, is, is this, are we safe with this, or is there retrashing? Because that's something new, okay? As far as what happened here, that they're going to implement the rates anyway, the rate increase, okay?
No, we're, we're safe with this. This is the only thing that will go through, if this motion...
The learning curve on this, and I think we need to remember what's happening here for the budget, because as I learned, we should learn that actually what we're being told, we have no guarantees.
Right, but this will be, the only thing we're moving forward with on my motion would be a 3.6.
We're being sold, okay, guys? Okay, and I just want to make that clear.
Okay. I, I'd like to address that.
I beg your pardon?
The item before this item was the budget. The budget is the guiding document that provides for budgetary controls over expenditures. So the budget is your control over what is spent. So I, I don't agree with what you're saying, that it's a bill of sale, it's, the budget is the document that the departments have to live by, and if you approve that at a rate, whatever the rate is, that's what has to be the amount that, the expenditures that they live with. So I just want to mention that, so...
You know, Brad, I, I understand that, and thank you so much for your clarity. You guys have been pretty decent about providing information, but again, I have to re, we're increasing revenues, and the only thing that I wanted to reiterate to council, okay? We're ultimately responsible for everything we do here to the people that elected us. So it's a different scenario here, you know? You guys can tell us whatever you want, but we're ultimately responsible to the people that have to be the ratepayers, okay? That's the only reason I made those comments.
And that kind of goes back to what Councilmember Starbuck said, is, the original rate study set out goals and objectives for both utilities to stop bleeding money, because they were both losing money, restore net income, so we made our bond covenants, set a reserve level that is appropriate for these type of organizations, and then, at the very end, which hasn't even happened yet, begin to set aside a reserve that could be used to pay for ongoing replacements of pipes. All through that, the, the studies provided for some minimum level of capital outlays, even without setting up that reserve, so, and that's what water is using to determine their 11 miles of pipe that they want to replace. They're actively working on design work to do that, but they can't actually spend the money until they let it out in the street and do an RFP, so it, those wheels are in motion.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Let's vote. That passes 3-2. Okay, let's see.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry if I could indulge you a moment. Circling back to our previous discussion on the budget and the upcoming meeting dates, I wanted to point out, we have discovered a bit of a conflict with the June 8th date. We can certainly continue on with that, but I just wanted to make council aware, that seems to be the evening of the Cabrillo High graduation. Couple of our experts in the budget area are having graduating seniors and will not be here that night. The rest of the staff's more than willing to cover and try to give you the best answers we can, but just wanted to make you aware of that. I didn't know if that made any difference to you from a public participation standpoint or not, from a staff participation, we'll be, we'll be a little light, but we trust our bench will be strong enough to cover.
Okay, well, we'll go, we'll, right now, we're going with the May 30th, and we have also the June 6th. Possibility, we're going to get all wrapped up by June 6th, right? And we'll take a look then at...
Your lips to God's ears, yes.
Yeah, so we'll look at June, June 8th later. Okay, let's see, that's, we, we need oral communication now. Is there opportunity to speak to us for two minutes on any item? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close our communication. Council requests comments and meeting reports, starting with Councilmember Mosby. Councilmember Starbuck?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Vega?
I do have a request, I, we have a special meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, with, I believe with the C3H group.
It's not just C3H, it's, it's many organizations concerning homelessness.
And you know what I'd like to do, is since we're looking at budget and, and the fiscal side of everything, what's it cost us to have a, a special meeting like that? Staff time and everything, okay? It's not for free, so I think that probably every time we call a special meeting, we should see what the cost is, so for public transparency, to see what's happening, to see if we can even afford it.
Okay, well, if you get a second and a third, they can give you that information.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, so that fails. Okay, so, anything else, Councilmember Vega?
Also, I would like the city attorney, a request to actually reference the fact that the, the mayor said that he had the ability and the authority to put anybody he wanted on the diocese during a special meeting. Is that in fact a true story, without consensus from the council? As far as in the special meeting, he made that comment that I can ask whoever I want on the thing, because I have that authority, and I'd like to have a clarification from you on the legal side of it.
I'll, I'll need to look back at the policy for a minute.
It's in the council handbook, if you want to know.
Which was referenced.
If you want to review the council handbook, it's in there.
I'd prefer to ask Joe Penone.
Sorry, I'm, I don't remember exactly where it was, and I don't remember the number, so it's going to take me a while to find it. So if there's something else that can go on while I'm looking, that'd be helpful for my nerves.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Osborne, do you have any comments?
I want to remind everyone that it's Police Week, and that tomorrow, the police department is having a food truck event at City Hall from 4 to 7, 4 to 8, just outside City Hall and the police department, so come out, enjoy our local food trucks, and show our police department your support. The Beautification and Appearance Commission has announced their Say It With Flower contests, which enables us to nominate our neighbors for their beautification in their yards and local businesses, and you can submit those to the Beautification and Appearance Commission by June 14th. Finally, the Ad Hoc Committee on Cannabis has been postponed until next Thursday, May 25th, here in council chambers, Thursday, same time, 6:30. Unfortunately, Councilmember Vega has a conflict, so we've just moved it a week, but the agenda will remain the same. I attended the LFD Penning, the Econ Alliance Wally Luncheon, the Day of Faith Event, the Disaster Prepared Event over at Home Depot, I attended the C3H meeting as our representative, and I attended the UCSB Economic Forecast last Friday in San Maria.
Okay. I attended many meetings, none at city expenses, so I have nothing to report. Mr. Penone, have you found it yet?
I found the one, I found the one section that refers to the council making decisions, but I haven't found yet the section that deals with the mayor.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, he will have that prior to opening the meeting next Tuesday, and if, if he feels it is anything else other than what I said, I'll retract my comment.
That's fair enough, Joe. If you can have it by next Tuesday, we have a special meeting scheduled, I just, before the meeting, I'd like to clarify...
Okay, I'll send you a memo.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, with nothing else, this meeting adjourned to a, I guess it's a budget workshop, at 6:30 PM on May 30th. Good evening.